Welcome to the January 2024 Village of Buchanan Board Meeting. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hi, Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Happy New Year, everyone. Our first meeting of the new year. First, we're going to approve the minutes for the November 28th Board Meeting. November 8th and 28th meetings. The Board Meeting on the 8th and the 28th for the workshop. Any questions, comments, or changes?
No questions.
Good.
No questions, I'm good.
Okay, okay. On a motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Comments from the floor, agenda items only? No comments, okay. Under new business, we have an update on the AMS project, and that's the project behind the hardware store in the hardware store area.
Is this supposed to be a presentation you'll bring up, or you just want to talk?
Well, we can put it out. For me, I'm going to talk, and then we're going to call some people off. Although, firstly, good evening, Mayor and members of the board. For the record, Mark Weingarten, on behalf of AMS Acquisitions LLC. The contract found the on the property, the six-acre property located at the intersection of Albany Post Road and Craft Lane in Buchanan. So, I guess, first I'll just ask some questions and just make sure that we're giving you what you need. You know, just going through the history, and you're well aware that the zoning was changed in connection with this project, and we're now consistent with that. And I can take you through the history of that. We've appeared in front of you a number of times. We also, when we came back to you after the zoning was adopted, we have moved, and what's before you now is our request for site plan and special permit and steep slopes approval in connection with this project. We saw you many months ago about that, and you sent us to the planning board. So, we went to the planning board for report and recommendation. We appeared in front of the planning board twice, in November and in December. We've had a series of meetings with them, and there were a lot of comments that came. And I'll put into the record in a moment, there were letters that went back and forth, comments that were done in writing and responded to, plans that were resubmitted and refiled with the changes that were requested by the planning board. And all of that has gone back and forth, was culminated in a vote by the planning board last month, and I'm pleased to report that it was a positive recommendation, that they had a series of comments and suggestions with respect to changes that should be made with regard to the site plan, but that they positively recommended the project. And it's now back to you. We hope to put the information in front of you this evening so that you can go forward with your public hearing to be able to vote on those three approvals that we have before you. So, we can give you the full presentation this evening. I have with us our full team, just for the record. With us tonight is Ryan Sutherland from AMS, the Director of Design, who you know well; Kevin Massey Avechio, who's our engineer from JMC; Peter Faro from AKRF, our planners, as well as Stuart Lax, our architect from Perkins Eastman. He's the principal of Perkins Eastman. So, we can give you the full presentation that we gave you with the planning board, that we gave the planning board the other day. We can wait for the public hearing to do it. It's really up to you. We can give you from five minutes to 30 minutes.
So, would you be doing another, the same presentation at the public hearing?
We could. We could do it tonight, or we could do it at the public hearing. So, we're going to kind of, again, we didn't have the discussion because of the holidays, et cetera, so I'm just going to kind of leave it to your discretion as to how you would like to treat that. We could do it tonight and at the public hearing. We're like a show that goes on the road and just keeps playing the same song.
Yes.
So, it's up to you guys as to how you'd like to treat this.
So, you said five to 30 minutes?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's do it tonight, because not everybody watches meetings every, and then we'll also, I'll have you do the presentation. You might have some updates for the next meeting also.
That's fine. Happy to do that. Okay.
Thank you.
So, again, Mark Weingarten, on behalf of AMS, I've introduced the team that's here with me this evening. Last January, as I mentioned, we filed a petition seeking to amend the zoning map of the village to rezone the rear portion of the property of the site from M1 Light Industrial District, 3.82 acres of the site, to the C2 District, and to map the entire site to the C1/C2 Overlay Zoning District. We also requested certain amendments to the C1/C2 Overlay Zoning District. Your board approved those requests in September of last year, and therefore, the project before you complies with all zoning requirements under the current ordinance. The proposed site plan, which is before you, consists of 148 luxury multifamily homes, 63 one-bedrooms, 85 two-bedrooms, with upscale amenities and this five-story building. The project contains a beautiful open courtyard, you'll see in a moment, an outdoor pool, fitness center, and resident lounge. It also provides green features such as bicycle ratchets, energy-efficient appliances and lighting, water-efficient plumbing features, and 12 electric vehicle charging stations, which are, again, we will talk about it, outside of the structure of the building. 223 parking spaces are provided, 149 of those spaces are provided in the structure underneath the building. Our proposal will develop a longtime vacant site in this village, beautifying the neighborhood, and will also build sidewalks as a pioneer of your plan for creating a village-like community atmosphere. The project is consistent with your comprehensive plan and your zoning code, including the supplemental district regulations for the C1/C2 Overlay District and the general special permit requirements of your code. We believe it creates a more diverse housing stock, provides transitional use between the R75 and R10, located to the west of the site, and the M1 District to the east. It creates physical and aesthetic improvements to the streetscape on Albany Post Road. We mentioned the new sidewalks, pedestrian crossings, landscaping, and it's designed to preserve natural features. We believe the project has numerous benefits for the village. It generates significant property, net property tax benefits for both the village and the school district. We estimate approximately $830,000 a year in total property taxes, with approximately $250,000 of that annually to the village and $470,000 per year to the schools. It creates numerous construction jobs and activities. Local businesses will thrive in their increase in sales from construction workers. They will also benefit in the long term from the new customers moving in to become village residents. As we mentioned, it creates a more diverse housing stock, a place for empty nesters to relocate from their single-family homes, divorcees to stay nearby the family home, and even more importantly, bringing people with income to live in your village where they are ready to start a family and then go buy a single-family home in what becomes their village and hometown. This bolsters the single-family market long term. In addition to site plan and special permit approvals, we are also seeking steep slopes to serve the servants' permit. By locating the project, and you'll see it pictorially in a moment, in the center of the site, we have avoided disturbance to the maximum extent practicable. Finally, as you are aware, this board on September 5, 2023 concluded seeker in its role as lead agency when it adopted a legislative declaration of environmental significance. Since our submission of this request on October 17, it was determined that the wetlands permit is not required in accordance with Section 203-10 of the Wetland Law of the Village. Despite that exemption, we have submitted a wetland mitigation plan as part of our site plan to mitigate the impacts of the small incursions into the buffer area totaling 10,670 square feet. Again, not an incursion into the wetlands, just the buffer, and the purpose of those incursions are to create the sidewalk which you've requested and the fire access lane on the southern side of the building requested by the fire department, as well as the construction of our stormwater treatment areas. Our request was referred, as I mentioned, by this board to the planning board. We met with them on November 13. In response to the comments received that evening, we submitted a letter dated 12/6, which attached revised plans, a construction management plan, and a draft construction logistics map. Our 12/6 letter also contained specific responses to questions raised at the 11/13 meeting. We appeared a second time at the planning board on 12/20, and again, I'm pleased to report the planning board positively recommended our application, together with a number of comments and suggested revisions. Subsequent to the planning board's recommendation, our engineers submitted further revised plans in response to the comments of the village engineer in his letter dated 12/6. And then finally, on 12/27, our engineers sent a revised submission to the New York State DOT, which addressed comments in the DOT review letter of December 7, and also comments received during a virtual meeting with DOT on December 12. So, that's the record, that's the history. Those are the requests. Certainly be available for any questions. I'm now going to turn it over in order to Stuart Lax, our architect, who will take you through the building architecture and the plans and what the project's going to look like. Kevin Massey Avechio, our engineer, who will talk a bit about some of the engineering issues that we're treating here and the civil issues. And then Ryan Sutherland, the principal at AMS, will close out for us. Thank you.
Just let me know which file you want.
The top one, please.
Top one?
Yes. And the mayor, members of the board, and staff. Stuart Lax, principal with Perkins Eastman Architecture Firm. You can go to the next. I'm just going to walk through a few things on the overall architecture, starting with rendered view. This is the northwest corner, where the entry is, the driveway comes up. This is the main drop-off point and entrance to the garage. And just, you can go to the next slide, just to refresh what Mark said. We have 148 units, 63 of them are one-bedrooms, 85 of them are two-bedrooms. It's a four-story building over a level of parking. There's about 190,000 gross square feet of residential building, plus the parking level. This is the view from the pond looking north. You can see here, and I'll go into it more, and the floor plans, the landscaped courtyard. It's a U-shaped building. Next slide, please. So, this is the parking level. This is the entrance that I was pointing out before, the vehicle entrance. We've got some amenity space here, and then the rest dedicated to parking with some back of house spaces there. Next slide. This is the main level. In that bottom-left corner, you can see the amenity spaces in purple. That opens out into the courtyard, as well as some of the units to the courtyard. That all faces south to maximize views, sunlight, and views into the courtyard and the number of units. Next slide. These are the sort of plans for the most typical one-bedroom and two-bedroom apartment. See, all of these, all of the apartments in the building will be ADA accessible. They're fully furnished, full bedroom, kitchens, bedrooms. Most of them have balconies as well and windows out. Next slide. The second, third, and fourth floors are substantially similar. They stack as you go up. Next slide. And here you can see two of the elevations in the building, starting at the top, the east elevation, that faces the power lines, the Con Ed property. You can see here, and you'll see it in the other elevations, the openings. The garage is kept open to allow it to be naturally ventilated. That extends all around. This is the north elevation, so again, the entry position for the main lobby, the entry into the garage, and more of the openings. Next slide. And here, the west elevation, this would be behind the hardware store. And then south, again, you see the courtyard shape beyond. Next slide. This is the inner courtyard elevation. It's a continuation of the same motif here inside the courtyard. And next. And talk about, this is a series of slides, and I have boards here as well I'll hold up, and I can bring it if you'd like, where we reviewed at the request of the planning board, the actual materials that we're proposing. It's a combination of cementitious siding, commonly known as hardy board, hardy plank, hardy siding, and then a heavy-weight vinyl that comes in a similar pattern and color, as well as stone. So...
That's a stone.
This is the simulated stone. It's a thin stone veneer, goes up against, and that's used at the base of the building to anchor the building.
How many feet does that go up from the base?
It varies. You can see here. Most of it is just at the lower floor, so it's about 12 feet, and then there are a few highlight points where we go up two stories. So, it's about 20, 22 feet. These are the actual samples. So, that's the same board that we have up on the screen. These are the hardy and some of the corresponding vinyl colors. You can see that that's a...
Sure. Do you want to, anybody want to say? Just pass it around. You're good? You guys want to say?
Stuart, you may want to describe some of those materials you're using on portions of the building and others and others, so maybe you just want to...
Correct. Thank you, Stuart. Yeah, the primary elevations, especially the three sides facing in the courtyard, will use the hardy plank. We're proposing the vinyl on the side that rarely is seen to the public.
Right.
That's the Con Ed side.
And you said the stone, some of the accent, they'll go up 20 feet?
Twenty, yeah. And you can see that here...
Yeah, like around by the columns.
Where it's sort of framing a two-story element.
But there's no other stone higher above, and higher elevation?
Yeah. So, this is more of the hardy. You can see the, this entry canopy that we're proposing. This is actually an aluminum that comes with a foot wood, so you get the finish of the wood, the appearance of the wood without the maintenance.
But the durability.
Yeah, the durability. Some of the storefront, the metal trim at the ground level, we've got both a sort of copper color and this darker color.
Looks good.
Thank you. This is the last one, just some of the accessory pieces, you know, the sort of aluminum-colored bronze, no, I'm sorry, bronze-colored aluminum of the railing system that shows up at the balconies, and then an asphalt shingle on the slope throughs. And you can sort of cycle through these, please. So, that, for, I guess for the members public watching this at home or later, these are the boards that I presented to the board.
Has there been any consideration to add more stone feature to some of the exterior? Just looking into, there's only a few feet of the actual building that's going to be visible to the public. It may be a little bit beneficial to have more of a stone...
More stone base.
Accent in that view.
We can look at it. I mean, it's sort of, it's part of the proportion of getting a consistency around. This is sort of slightly more technical in nature, just talking about the construction of the building. The elevator shafts and stair shafts and trash chute shafts would be CMU, non-combustible, two-hour rated, one-hour rated walls, wood walls, but one-hour rated between apartments, here, here to here, or here to here, and then half-hour rated walls between the apartments and the corridor. And that's all in conformance with New York State Code. And then similarly, we've got a three-hour concrete wall, well, slab, that would form the separation between the garage and the residential above, and then the exterior wall construction, roof construction, and floor construction is, again, all one-hour rated. And that's fully within compliance with the building code, as well, the acoustical rating, the noise ratings between apartments, something we're very sensitive to. Next slide. And just really bringing it back to the original rendering, and I think, Kevin, yeah, Kevin will go over some of the natures of the site itself.
The third one, please.
The third one?
Good evening, Kevin Massey Avechio from JMC, for the site engineers. So, we just kind of want to step back and walk through the site planning, and we put together some graphics which walked through the site plan set, which was submitted, and is the proposed site plan. So, just kind of zooming out, you know, everybody should be familiar, but for the record, just showing where the site is located, you know, this is, north is facing to the left, we're at the corner of Craft Lane and Albany Post Road. And then moving in a little bit closer, the site surrounds the hardware store with a little small piece which goes out to Albany Post Road. And again, north is to the left, so Craft Lane is on the left side of the screen. Now, we're getting into some of the site constraints, which is how we designed and laid out where the proposed building was placed on-site. So, towards the southern end of the property, there is a pond with flagged wetlands, and then a wetland buffer which is off of the wetlands. And then in both the southeast and northeast corners of the site, there are steep slopes, which, as discussed, we're trying to mitigate and disturb as little as we can, although we are disturbing the steep slopes. And so, kind of moving to where we placed the building was around all of these features, and we placed it in the center portion of the site to try and avoid and mitigate these existing features on-site. And the other item that we're trying to point out on this plan here is shown in purple, is we're leaving room with site planning for a future potential building, although not proposed right now for a potential retail use in the northwest corner of the property. And along with this, we'd have to reshape parking and potentially other things that would come with that, but there's a potential parking area would go further into the steep slope, which is one of the reasons why we're not looking to do this at this time, but we're planning for the site and leaving an open space for future use.
On that particular point, I just want to add, because we've had a lot of conversation with it even during the zoning piece of this, it's also possible that once we're open and operating and have tenants in the building, it turns out that we have built more parking than we actually need. There are some studies that we've said that, and what the trends are with people and cars, that it's possible that we will be overparked. If that's the case, we could potentially come back for a variance, to be able to create a retail store and not need to build additional parking, which is really the constraint at the moment. So, I want to point out that while some people say, well, will it ever happen? It's very possible if things continue the way they are, with parking the way it is. If we do it, and it turns out that we have extra spaces, that is definitely a possibility in the future.
Thanks, Mark. I think we're going to continue that conversation during the public hearing.
And just kind of moving into, this is the steep slopes which we are deserving on-site, and what's shown is in the yellow, and the orange is the different existing steep slopes, and the red line shows the limited disturbance, so we're just calculating and presenting how much we are disturbing of both the different categories by code. And the purple circles are the two hilltops, which, again, we're trying not to disturb into the different areas. And then just also presenting as part of the site plans is the number of trees which are to be, proposed to be removed, and just as part of the development of the site. And there's a landscaping plan shown later, which does replant trees and other sorts of landscaping features. So, getting into the proposed site plan, as kind of shown a few slides ago, the sites propose to have access with two driveways, one of them for emergency use only on Albany Post Road, and the other one off of Craft Lane as the main vehicle access driveway. And then up towards, this is the main entry for the building, and as you move towards the top of the screen, this is where vehicles will enter the garage. And it's a one-way flow shown with the arrows as you go around, so we're creating a drop-off point for residents or visitors, so they can be under a covered area, drop-off, pickup for the building. And then there's also a bypass area if you're just going straight to the garage. And then we're proposing three pedestrian accessways to the site. One of them will be accessible, and then two of them have stairs along the route. So, there's a proposed from north to south, which is left to right. There's a staircase through the parking lot, which also creates an accessway. If you park your car over there, you can follow the route through with the stairs and crosswalks to the building. And then the center parking area, the center pedestrian route, sorry, is, it will be accessible with the slopes that are proposed from the building out to the right away. And there's an additional pedestrian route proposed between the hardware store and that small portion of our property, we're posing a sidewalk connection, where there are stairs needed because of the topography. But the accessible spaces are closer.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sure.
So, a certain area you want me to look at?
Just where the access points are.
I was kind of wondering where the emergency from the Albany Post Road. Now I can see it a little better.
So, this is the emergency access road. It's proposed with grass pavers, so it'll look like grass, but it's a support, it'll support the fire truck loading, so it won't be pavement.
And there'll be a curb cut there with a gate?
Yeah, so it'll be a mountable curb, and then it's proposed just to chain and bollard, so that you can't drive across it without opening up. And it'll be a Knox lock, so access for the fire department, they'll have a key access to it to be able to open it.
And you said the access point on the left through the parking lot, that's going to require stairs?
Yes. It's between the parking lot area, where there's a small 10-foot area of landscaping. It's, it's like a three-on-one slope, so it does require stairs to get down between the parking lot surface and the sidewalk. But there is the route that does not have stairs for an accessible route. And the accessible spaces are up towards the building, so there's, you know, they can just access over the building.
And I'm sorry, last question on this slide. That pedestrian access on the right, is that only going to be for residents or anybody? It's public?
It would really only be for residents, because it just goes to the building. There's not an amenity for the public on the site.
Thank you.
So, this slide is detail on how much parking is proposed on-site. So, as mentioned earlier, there's 223 parking spaces proposed on-site, which meets the code. The code requires 1.5 spaces, so within the building, there's 149 spaces proposed, so one more than one per unit. And then outside the building, we're proposing 74 additional parking spaces. And within the building, there are also nine tandem spaces, which are not being counted towards the parking total.
And I believe there's some discussion at the planning board, it'll be assigned spaces?
I think it's still being discussed with the management. And then, so this here, in the orange box, these are the 12 electric spaces that are currently proposed. So, in addition to the 12 that are currently proposed, all surface parking spaces are going to be, that we conduit run, so that in the future, any of the surface parking spaces could be converted over to electric charging. And then additionally, inside the building, there's 20 parking spaces, which are going to be wired, ready for charging, but not proposed at this time. Just, it brings up the overall parking, where it will be ready when open to have up to 42% of the parking spaces as electric vehicle, but currently only 12 are proposed.
And I believe I heard the proposed spaces within the building would be on the exterior wall?
Yes, correct, as coordinated with the fire department.
Great.
But we're not proposing any inside at this time. And so, as talking about the fire department, here is the fire access roads, which are accessing the site. One's from Craft Lane and one's from Albany Post Road, and then they get up to both the north and south side of the building. And additionally, on the east side of the building, it was requested by the planning board to have an access point for fighting fires as well, so we're looking to provide that as well on the east side of the building, a connection point, where we're showing in the yellow circles, proposed fire hydrants, there will also be an access point on the east side of the building.
And that second access road's going to have the same green pavers?
Yes, correct.
If I'm correct, there's a hydrant also on Route 9A?
Yeah, there's an existing hydrant on 9A south of Craft.
You should mark that for the public hearing, too.
All right, next slide. So, this here, we're graphically showing the way we're trying to mitigate the slopes is by proposing to either a rock cut or retaining walls, and it's all a bit unknown until you actually cut into the ground to know what the condition of the rock is, but we're looking But we're looking to propose rock cuts around the site. And in green is where we're looking to propose these two on both the north and south ends of the building. So these would be either rock cuts or those retaining walls on either side of the building. And then these are some of what we're looking to present for it, just either the exposed rock slope. And then if necessary, if it needs the mesh protection in the top right corner. And then additional option would be a retaining wall built in front of a rock slope, depending on the condition of the rock.
So the third picture that shows the rock slope with the anchored steel wire, is that not an option?
It really depends on kind of what the rock is like once it's exposed. And we would like to just have an exposed rock slope, but if it needs protection on top of it and then if it's in, if we can't have any rock slope and it needs a retaining wall or put in front of it, it's, we'd like to go for the rock slope, but if it needs wire mesh in front of it, you know, that's as a protection. It really depends on the condition once we get the rock exposed.
Understood, thank you.
So moving into some of the other aspects of the site planning and getting into utilities, this is the stormwater aspect of the project. So in green and orange are the two different ways that the stormwater goes when it falls onto the property in existing. The orange area goes to the pond towards the south and the green area goes northwest off the property. Next slide, please. So what we're looking to do with the proposed site, proposed site plan with stormwater is treat it the same way that it's treated in existing conditions. And then also make sure we accommodate for our proposed development. So heading towards the northern side, we're collecting the water and we're treating it into a jellyfish filter, which is a water quality structure. And then it's being detained into stormwater chambers. And then it's being released out into the existing stormwater system. And there's a pipe which runs on Albany Post Road below Craft Lane. And the pipe is currently collapsed or at least partially collapsed, so we're looking to replace that as part of the connection and it'll upgrade the existing condition of that intersection. And then towards the south, we're collecting, we're looking to collect the courtyard drainage areas and the roof drain leaders, put them into planter systems and then outlet into another detention system to slow down the water. But in this case, we're going to use, we're proposing to use planter systems compared to a manufactured water quality structure, add a little bit of greenery and also treat the water. And then we'll slowly be outletting to the pond. So we're trying to treat it in different practices, but also send the water to where it goes in existing.
Would the potential retail building have any impact on that system?
So we've placed the system outside of where a footprint for a building would go, but if the building goes in, it wouldn't add additional impervious surface, so it should be accommodated with the proposed practices.
Great, thank you.
I had one more question. Well, go ahead, go to the next slide. I was just reading in part of the, in relation to the green roofs, if you could just explain to her, it would be nice to have a rendering to understand what it's going to look like.
So this is where we're trying to provide what some of these practices might look like. So on the right is an example of what the green roof that we're proposing will look like. It's just kind of planter areas where it's just a layer of soil and it's just meant to look like, you know, if you look out, you see like a meadow or other areas that aren't on roofs, but they, this one happens to be on a roof. So it's mimicking what a typical, any other green practice that you would see around. And then on the left, off the courtyard area at grade, there is a larger planter area which also will filter water through. So the water gets placed in, filters down through the soil media to get out any contaminants. Then there's an underdrain which takes it out into the post piping. So these are two of the practices that we're proposing. And then this is the manufactured system, the jellyfish, the water quality structure. And what it has is the water comes in one side and goes out the other one and the water is forced down and through the, this media which can then be taken out, cleaned, replaced as necessary as just another way of treating it on the other side of the site. So these are the detention chambers, so they're just, it's high arches and there'll be a watertight liner which goes around them. And all it just takes the water in and stores it and then it'll slowly go out through a pipe to mimic how the site, how the water leaves the site in existing. It doesn't leave as quickly.
Did you say watertight?
Not watertight, it'll be, we're putting a filter around it, a fabric. It's, the reason why we're doing detention and no infiltration is because of the groundwater that was experienced during testing and also the bedrock. So there's no credit for any infiltration, but if any infiltration occurs, it would just benefit the detention proposed. So the next, moving on to other utilities proposed, you can go back one slide, please. So this is the proposed water and sanitary, which are proposed services from the village. So they're both, I'm sorry, Buchanan, we're in the Buchanan Storm, sanitary sewer district and Buchanan Water District. So going out from the building in orange is the sanitary connection, which is proposed to connect on Albany Post Road. And then the water is proposed to connect off of Craft Lane. And then highlighted is the connection to the building and then the hydrant on the north and south side of the building. And these are the connections proposed from Con Edison. So we're proposing a gas connection which will come off of Craft Lane. And then we're also proposing an electric connection which would come off of a service pole and then travel underground towards the building in red through a transformer. And this would go to the building on the west side. The gas service is proposed mostly for a backup generator, but the units are proposed to have electric heating.
Is the hot water electric as well?
Do you know what hot water is? Yes. So the lighting we're proposing onsite, and we have been coordinating with village staff, so some of these fixtures, and you'll see on the next slide, we're working to update this. But around the site, we're proposing 18-foot-high post-top lighting, which is shown with the red circles. And then the dash red circles is pedestrian bollards which run adjacent to the sidewalk in this area. So that's three and a half feet high. So what we're looking here is to, we're proposing to light the site with, you know, minimal space, 18-foot-high bollard, post-top lighting and then pedestrian lighting where appropriate. And as kind of mentioned, we're looking to update these fixtures into what the village is looking for, coordination around the other areas of the village. So we're working through this, this is kind of more of a recent comment and we'll be able to update this into the site plan.
Appreciate that.
So this is showing the lighting levels. It's one of the plans that was submitted and what it shows is that with the post-top lighting, the light spreads out in all directions. And we are lighting the sidewalk which is proposed along Albany Post Road, even though it's not on our property, we're, we will be lighting it with the onsite lighting.
Is the sidewalk lighting or bollard lighting?
It's just the.
On the Albany Post Road side, or is he going to?
Those are the, so the, these are.
Those are the 18?
These are the 18-foot-high ones, so then this sidewalk has the bollard lighting.
Yeah, the ones with the dash.
So just kind of moving into the courtyard and we will look to kind of update these as well, but we're trying to look to bring in the same lighting into the courtyard area. So we were looking to use similar bollards as in the parking lot side into the courtyard area. And then other bollards, so other lighting fixtures. So this would be a 12-foot-high fixture instead of 18-foot-high going into the courtyard area, bring things down in pedestrian scale a little bit. And then some other planter lighting. And then on the next slide, just some other examples of what we're looking to bring into the courtyard area for lighting practices. There's some string lighting and other accent lighting within the courtyard area. So getting into the landscaping that's proposed, so we're proposing 74 trees around the property and a variety of different shrubs and bushes and grasses. So this is within the wetland buffer area where we're disturbing, as mentioned earlier. This is mainly disturbance for the fire access road, a sidewalk proposed and then the stormwater treatment practices. So there's no, the hard surface in this area will only be a sidewalk. The, all the other areas that are proposed to be put back will be pervious areas with the grass pavers, stormwater planter. And then even though, you know, we're not going into the wetland area itself, but we are looking to mitigate and remove invasive species and then put additional plantings within this buffer area to really enhance it from the existing. So this is the monument sign which we're proposing for the site. There's one proposed on Albany Post Road and one on Craft Lane. Then moving to off-site improvements, as discussed, we're proposing a sidewalk from Craft Lane along our whole frontage. And then there is a series of crosswalks which are proposed across the hardware store's property. And then a crosswalk is proposed across Albany Post Road. And this is all going to be in coordination with NYSDOT as they do own and maintain and have the jurisdiction on Albany Post Road. But as we look at the frontage here, we're putting the sidewalk right along the property line and then we're looking to landscape the buffer between the parking lot and the sidewalk area to have an appealing frontage.
And I correct, I know that staff had a meeting with DOT, I believe that crosswalk is not in consideration, is that true?
I think that was with the other prop, project.
Correct, that's correct, that's the other property.
They are still reviewing and they haven't weighed in fully on our proposed location here, but I think that one was down by Rock ledge or one of the other, the other project was proposing.
So this is at Lindsay?
Yep.
Correct.
I know the.
They, the DOT does not want, does prefer not to have any crosswalks for Route 9A. On the Carbone property, it was more of a blind curve issue. They're still studying this, they would like to have the pedestrian stay on one side as much as possible, but they are studying this as well.
The sight line right there is very difficult, so I'd like to see that, look that a little closer.
Yeah, I think that was one thing they asked for was the site distance at the crosswalk. So just kind of showing the section between the parking lot and sidewalk here, we have the landscape and the shrubbery and the trees proposed. And then additionally, from the meeting mentioned with DOT is we're looking to complete a connection up towards the Forest Hills Commons and across the Buchanan Commons and we're, and propose an additional sidewalk in this area. And we're working between the village and DOT and the adjacent property, we're just getting this process going as it was kind of a recent comment. But we are looking to add a proposed sidewalk in this area, so sidewalk would connect to an existing sidewalk. And then just this slide and the next slide are showing some initial proposed renderings of the courtyard area. It is being developed into more detail for permitting, but we're looking to propose an amenity space with a pool, barbecue grills, just seating areas, just different amenities which would be proposed for all the residents. And I think that's all that we have for the site plan here. And we're going to have Ryan come up and show some examples for the project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Ryan, which one?
Number three.
I wasn't one of the three.
Oh, sorry, number two. I was supposed to go be number two, number three. Good evening, Ryan Southland from AMS, I'm our Director of Design. And while we haven't designed the interiors of the building yet, we do want to show you some examples of other projects we have in construction so you get a kind of a feel of what we do on the insides. So this is a project in Easton, New Jersey, it's under construction, it'll be open next year. And this is just a picture of kind of the amenity space as you walk past the main lobby. Just to give you a look and feel of what's in the building, usually we have a grand staircase and a double-height space. We'll have that in this project, when you come in the first floor next to the parking garage into the lobby, you'll see a grand stair going up to the second floor where we have our main amenity areas in the building. Just in this image, you'll see on the left, we have a demonstration kitchen with a bar. So you can have, you know, a chef come in with an induction cooktop, do some cooking demonstrations. We're planning on using induction ranges in the units, so that could be a good way to get residents, you know, interacting with kind of a new technology. Also, you could have a happy hour at the bar, you could open it up and have a larger party, private party, public party to the building. Really, what we look to do in all of our communities is really bring the building together so that people actually interact with each other and have, you know, resident-driven activities or community manager will set up an activity and bring people in and really engage with them. So this is just another view from like the back corner, looking through the dining area, you see that bar on the right side. In the far corner, you see a fireplace up here, this is a double-sided fireplace right next to your lobby entrance. Really, we like to, you know, have a lot of natural, neutral tones in the space. We also have some wow moments with some nice natural stone and really, you know, just catch your eye in a few spots while having a kind of calm, pleasing aesthetic to the building. So this is just an example of a courtyard, this is actually on grade, not on a podium, but it gives you an example of a pool with a built-in spa. In the right corner over here, you have the barbecue area with a TV wall. And then you have a garden area and some active lawn areas in the back. So we try to have like a nice mix of, you know, active and relaxing amenity activity. So these are some unit features from some other projects that we have and pretty typical for what we do. We have large oversized kitchens, usually you don't, we don't provide small little strip kitchens. We have, you know, islands, bar seating, quartz countertops, stainless steel appliances. You have soft closed drawers and undercabinet lighting, again, all things you'd find in a nice house. And then a stackable washer dryer in the units. And again, so the units in this project are designed to be a little more deep than a typical multifamily unit. So you have flexibility for furnishing, you have room for, you know, couch, TV, a dining table and then the bar seating. So that really lays out well for a unit of the size that we're planning. As Stuart had mentioned, all the units have balconies, so we like to have that connection to the outside as well. And then oversized windows, central air, USB outlets in every room, and walk-in closets in the larger units. And then the bathrooms, we try to make them as spa-like as possible, I know that it's thrown around a bit, but we do have, you know, porcelain tile, we have large walk-in showers in the master bedrooms, en suites and then double vanities as well. I think that's it.
Thank you. So a little more than 30 minutes, but there were some questions, but it was close. So that's our presentation, it's really our hope tonight to answer any questions you may have, find out if there's any additional information you need. And we're looking forward to getting towards the end, towards the public hearing, to having the discussion as to finishing up and hopefully getting something we can build.
All right, Mark, thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Any other questions, we're good?
Great, thank you, good seeing everyone.
So we will see you, we will see you next month.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to schedule a public hearing, right?
Well, yeah, it's on the agenda.
Okay.
That's great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Yeah, Mayor, I think the applicant's done a very thorough job of providing information to the village and being responsive. They received just recently the memo that this office prepared that summarized the December 20th meeting of the planning board. But you have that, the planning board has that, so they'll most likely be providing some response at some point in time in the future if you schedule a public hearing.
We got those today, I actually looked at them quickly. I think a lot of them have already been incorporated into the revised plans because they came at us. They gave you the full list, some of them came at the first meeting, some of them came at the second meeting. So I think we'll find that a lot of them have already been treated, but whatever has not yet been treated, we'll let you know how we are dealing with them or if we have an issue. I think there was one that we had an issue with out of all of them, so, which had to do with the access from the courtyard to the, because it's up on the first floor down and we had, you have to come around to the, to the open area by the pond. We're also not necessarily encouraging children to go down to the pond, but so that was the one issue and that was only one planning board member. Other than that, I don't think there was anything that we had an issue with, but we'll make sure that we summarize that at the public hearing.
So the, with respect to scheduling the public hearing, certainly I think that the applicant, reviewing all the material, they meet the requirements for scheduling a public hearing as per your code. There were just two things, just from my observations, that I think the board should be sensitive to. And Dan, one of the things you raised is the, how you're treating that, that rock cut. And Dan, one of the things you raised is the, um, how you're treating that, that rock cut, um, condition. Because that's a visual issue and I think to the extent that you can stay away from the, the mesh.
Yeah.
We should try and avoid that at all, you know.
That's, that's what kind of stuck out when, when I saw that.
Yeah. So I think that's something that is a sensitivity that the board should work with the applicant on to try and address that issue as part of the, uh, the site plan. And the other was the, just the frontage, um, on Albany Post Road between the, um, the hardware store and Craft Lane and how that's treated. And whether you want to have, um, and I had asked the applicant to, to look at some alternatives because in your design guidelines, it does talk about having the potential for a stone wall that separates the parking area from Albany Post Road along with the, the landscaping. And if the applicant is removing, um, the rock that they need to, maybe that's a way of reusing some of that on site. Um, that's an alternative that I would think that you would may want to follow up with, uh, the applicant. And they could come back, uh, as part of the public hearing and respond to, uh, to that particular issue. But other than that, I think that those are really kind of design issues, visual issues that I think are important for the village to consider, uh, with respect to, uh, to this application.
We're, we're happy to look at that. I'm not sure how much room we have, but we, we can take a look.
Appreciate it.
Because we're trying to put a lot in there. We're putting landscape, we're putting lighting, dealing with the D O T issues which aren't even resolved yet. But we're happy to certainly take a look at it, as we did with every other suggestion that came up over the months.
I just want to thank you, Mark, Ryan, and Kevin, your entire team for coming in. I think you guys provided all the information, you know, we needed to move forward with scheduling a public hearing. I also want to thank the planning board as well for their questions and the information that you provided for them. I know I watched, uh, you know, both the meetings and it was very helpful. So, thank you.
And Mark, the only thing I'd like you to come back with, um, on the frontage of Albany Post Road, what the trees or the shrubbery is going to be?
Yeah, we have that, don't we?
Did I miss?
Kevin, you can come up.
No, it wasn't in the presentation, but they said that they were gonna replace.
You're looking for a specific, uh, species type, type of landscaping? Yeah.
Not the Latin.
Right, right. Yes, of course. I think that's on the plans, both Latin and English.
Okay, the English, I could, I understand. So if it's a pyramidal abreviate, I get that. I know what that is.
The, the, the trees are red maples. I, I don't have the specific shrubs all written down here.
Yeah, I'm, I'm.
But the trees are red maples.
What I'm looking for is like, what is the height from the, the road to, you know, visually from the road, what kind of tree is going to be on the Albany Post Road?
Like how, how big it'll be when it's mature, when it's?
Yeah.
I think that, um, we were discussing.
Cross-section picture.
Yeah. I, I think the, the mature height should be between thirty and forty feet. When they, I mean, they're not going to be installed at that height because you don't have that.
Yeah.
But, um, but the mature height would be between thirty and forty feet.
Okay.
In, in fact, when we were at the planning board and I recall seeing a picture, I just don't know that I have it in front of me. There was a discussion about concern about their height, about having to trim them because of the Con Ed wires, because of how high they would be. So they, they're substantial trees.
You said they're red maples? Yeah, they can be maintained in any size you want, you know.
I just didn't know if it was an evergreen type.
No, deciduous, deciduous trees. Yeah. At least in, in that area along the frontage, there are some evergreen around the property and other areas, but, but not along the frontage, which would just be lower shrubs and then the larger deciduous trees proposed right now.
Might consider some, some other larger evergreens there too, just as a little bit more of a buffer.
Okay, yeah, I mean, if there's like a, if we put, we'll get a stone wall too or other visual to buffer. But, so the parking lot is, it's up a few feet from the street level too. So any, uh, if you have an hedge, you, it would then need to be higher if you're looking to screen the cars or I guess, uh.
It's kind of more looking, screening the cars and, and there's been some comments made.
Okay.
Because my original thoughts with this whole plan is, um, and the county wanted the building exactly like on the property, the edge of the property. That's kind of what they think, you know. They don't think parking lots should be showing, but I, I just think there's a better way to buffer a parking lot than having a five-story building. You know, and my, my thought process on that is when we were going through, um, the whole overlay district, eventually the nine A corridor will be developed, you know, over the years, you know, we could potentially have different developers coming in. And you don't want to see all these buildings like close on the property line because then you have like a canyon effect going down nine A. You know, you have these big buildings and yes, the parking is in the back. But as you're driving down, it's, it, it just cuts the light off and everything else from the nine A corridor. We have another piece of property that's for sale right across the street. They're not going to be able to get a five-story building there, but how would that look? You know, you, you have to visualize things ahead of time. So you have five stories here, potential of five stories there. And that could potentially over the years, that nine A corridor can get developed. And what you're driving through is a canyon. So that's what I thought was very important from the beginning, that the building be pushed back further into the property instead of being, you know, right up front on, on Albany Post Road. Everybody has a different opinion, but I just, you know, visualizing the future down the road, you know, I just thought that would just look horrible up canyon, uh, going down nine A. Thank you. Okay, so let's move right in to. My goodness. Thanks, Dan. I have it here somewhere. Okay, so I would like to make a motion to schedule a public hearing on a special permit and site plan for the A M S project at the February sixth, uh, twenty twenty-four meeting. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Thank you. All right, good night. Okay, uh, we are going to switch the agenda around. We have our engineer, George Palmer, here this evening and, uh, we're going to have a discussion on the crosswalks. George, um, so this goes back to, um, there was a complaint or a suggestion from a resident that walks. And they felt that the intersection on Bannon Avenue and Kings Ferry, the intersection of Tate Avenue and Kings Ferry was dangerous. They walk a lot. Uh, they've almost gotten hit a couple of times. So, uh, of course we want to make sure that all the intersections, the crosswalks are, are safe for walkers. And, um, safe for everyone, really. And, uh, in contacting the town, I think there was some confusion that what we were asking for. And, um, one of the statements that was made that came back was, um, from the town, the short answer is, we cannot create new crosswalks that aren't connected with existing sidewalks. And this invites people to cross to inappropriate locations. Well, that's why we want the crosswalk there because we want people to be safe and we want them to cross at appropriate, uh, places. And all of our crosswalks were put in, in place back when a major sidewalk project was completed and all the crosswalks were designed by our traffic consultants and put in place. So what I'd like to say about this, yes, the town did install the, the sidewalks on Kings Ferry Road when the library was built. So it's, it's been a while. And they maintain those sidewalks on Kings Ferry. So in the wintertime when it snows, the town is the one that, that cleans that. So all's, all's the village was asking for, and the board talked about this, just asking for a crosswalk and to have the A D A, um, to be in compliance, have the ADAs at, you know, the, uh, at the end of the sidewalk. That's all we were asking. So I don't know where the confusion came from on their part, but, uh, they're asking for a sketch now.
Sure.
Thanks, George.
Uh, I'd like to piss.
Thank you.
Sketch?
Did some drugs.
Do you need, do you need Dave for anything else, do you?
No, I think we're good, Dave. I, I have nothing else on.
Thank you, Dave. Good night.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, David.
Happy New Year again.
So, um, in resp- good, good evening, Mayor, Trustees. Um, in response to that comment about, um, crosswalks and the neighbor having a complaint about, uh, crossing the road, crossing the sidewalk, we originally had a crosswalk included, uh, a ramp, include ramps included in our project. And when we got to the point of doing the ramps, we looked at it more closely. And if you look at this, um, intersection and we received the complaint that Marcus, uh, mentioned as well, we looked at it more closely and if you look closely, actually Montrose Line cuts through the, uh, cuts through one of the crosswalks there. And our sidewalks are on the, would be the west side. And Montrose crosswalks are on the east side. So when they put these sidewalks in, I don't know what agreement was made about maintenance and how that all was intended to work. But the person that maintains it is supposed to be the person that upgrades it. So it kind of raised a whole bunch of questions, came up with, why are we, why are we doing it if they maintain it and they put it in? So, so when we got to the point of doing this, if you go out there today, you look at it, you'll see there's a little notch inside the, where the, right before the crosswalks where the old pavement is. So if you look at the, uh, crosswalk, you'll see that it's old pavement in front of it rather than new pavement. And that's because usually we get CHIPS money. When you get CHIPS money, you know, it's, you're supposed to upgrade the sidewalks to A D A. So we said, oh, let's not touch the asphalt in front of here because we may have CHIPS money. We might have to be getting money for that. So let's, it's better to leave it as is than to touch it and create more of a problem. So in us looking at this, right now, the mouth of this opening is about seventy-five feet long. Seventy-five feet, uh, average correlation is twelve, so it's, it's long. And what we would think is the way this should have been designed is to bring it, we, we scooched it in a little bit. Where you have the crosswalk, um, closer to, um, closer to the Bannon, down Bannon Avenue. That reduces seventy-five down to forty-five. That's a big reduction. You want to keep the walk time, you know, the travel time here as low as possible. Seventy-five feet is a, is a healthy distance. So, um, no, usually we, we do the, the ramps and we, we don't go to this extent. But when we took a close look at this, it, it starts to get more complicated than a simple. We have, in our road project, we have several ramps in there. We've replaced them and it's, it's not an issue. This one, it gets a little more complicated. And then we're moving the stop bar back. And when we do all this, a person right now would get, currently would get, uh, start walking around the, or walking, I'm sorry, walking across Bannon. And they could, someone, they won't see anyone coming down Bannon if they're going west. And by the time they get halfway across, they're, you know, it's a problem. Not even halfway, maybe a couple of steps, but they're getting into the, to the walking area and then they have to turn around, go back. So it gets, it gets complicated. And the shorter you can make it, like I said, the better. Um, so we, we gave you a proposal. Uh, we added, I know Phil Greeley, uh, Colliers, we've worked with them for many years. They're a good company. They, they would do the exact same thing. They would look at this and they'd say, okay, um, what, how can we approve it? So, uh, that, this is probably what they would do as well. Um, they gave you some numbers. They totaled like twenty-five thousand dollars worth of cost. I think we'd do it for a lot less than that. We got a surveyor. It was like, uh, two thousand dollars. And that was to do both intersections. It's really hardly anything. And when, the other issue you run into is when somebody brings it up and has a safety concern, you really should be documenting it to a standard. And Pro WAG is the standard. I mentioned that in the, in the, uh, in our proposal. And it's part of New York State, Pro WAG is what, uh, F H W A, which is the government, which the D O T follows. They have this nice little, um, checklist of sixty items that you're supposed to check to make sure you're doing. So not only is the sidewalk supposed to be cross-pitched, but the crosswalk's supposed to be cross-pitched. It's supposed to have a certain slope, certain angle, all this other stuff. So it's, it's, it starts getting more and more complicated. And five years ago, ten years ago, we wouldn't even be doing this.
Just would have painted it.
We would just painted it. We, we, we would just paint it. We'd just change it and we'd be done. But now we're in a different, a different world where A D A is kind of taking the forefront and, uh, here we are. So, uh, that's where we're at. And I, I have a copy of the, so Phil Greeley mentions non-standard features. What he's talking about is this, this is a New York State D O T form. It's got a whole bunch of criteria in here. The last two pages have this extensive checklist, which, I mean, it's kind of, it's a lot.
It's a lot to go through. ADA is, is what we built these, you heard it tonight with, uh, with A M S. They're building to ADA standards. The crosswalks that they're gonna build, what they're looking at, uh, they didn't mention it tonight, but they're in the first phase with D O T. There's two more phases. Don't mention that at the planning board meeting. And they're gonna look at, they're gonna look at this checklist. They're gonna go through it and say, oh, site distance, looking down the road and all that. It's, it's gonna be, trying to get a crosswalk is harder than it used to be. So, um, and then when you put painted lines, it adds more to the whole liability issue. So it's actually a big change. The other one at Tate actually has a flashing light. As you know, you can see it, it's elevated to that level because there's too much traffic. Hopefully this one don't ever get a flashing light. I, I remember when Kings Ferry had no lights on it down at the other end and they put lights down by the school, all the seven lights because it was a couple of accidents. So, uh, that's, that's essentially where I, I put some numbers in there for, for design. I mean, right now, the only thing that this really needs is spot elevations.
And to go through this form, and that's really more or less checking, uh, everything here. I don't think, and the other, the other important thing here too is, we mentioned Town of Portland. We have to discuss this with them and you as a board have to say, okay, you guys have been maintaining this. You guys have been taking care of it. Here's our sketch. You guys want to?
And that's what the board, that, that was the direction of the board last time is to, you know, have the town do it because they maintain it.
They maintain it.
So, but the only thing that the town is looking for right now would be, uh, to look at a plan or a sketch, what's proposed.
So this would be your sketch?
Entertain it.
And this took a couple hours. That's all it took to, to come up with a sketch. So, um, so here's the sketch. And we would do the same treatment. We didn't do Tate. You know, we didn't do a sketch of Tate, but it'd be essentially the same thing.
Okay.
It's got a, a big wide opening, shorten it up. So we made the, the radius. I don't know why it's so big. Um, it used to be.
Yeah, looking at the stop sign location, I don't know, coming out of Bannon, you could see right or left.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
No, for, for out there.
So.
And even if you're at the edge of that road there, Bannon and, and Kings Ferry, it's hard, especially in the summertime. It's a little difficult to see. There's a lot of, uh, overgrowth, um, and, and shrubs on both sides.
So, so to Trustee's, like you said, you'd, you'd pull up to the stop sign and you'd creep into the sidewalk and to the thing to look both ways. So you gotta check site distances, corner lots, site distances and all that kind of good stuff. Um, it's really, it's really, and actually the sidewalk here looks like it's going out to someone's property, um, on the one corner. I'm not sure if that's the school. I'm not sure who that is.
No, this is, there's two houses on, on.
That was Jim.
Before you get into Kings Ferry. So it's on the other end of Bannon.
Okay. So, so that's, yeah, we took in the, uh, would be a thirty-three foot radius and shrinking it down to twenty-two. And when you do that, it's enough to get the buses around. I don't know if there's ever trucks going down here. Is there any trucks?
You've got plenty of room there, George.
You've got plenty of room.
That radius, you're, you're taking that radius and pushing it out. Now you're making it twenty-two feet.
Yep.
And you're, you're gonna match it the other side.
Uh, the other side? Yeah. Making it twenty-two on the other side.
Now, the, the pre-existing, is it close to where you are right now?
It's, uh, on the west side, it lines up pretty close. You can't see it under there, but the twenty-two and the thirty are not, not too far apart. But on the, um, east side, you're a good five, six feet away, seven feet away.
Yeah, that landing is gonna have to be extended as well.
And then you got the bus stop there. And then this whole thing has got a whole bunch of criteria for bus stop. So somebody's actually, and it gets even more complicated because somebody's going this way, someone's getting off at the bus. And there's a, there's a stop sign on the other side. So I imagine someone coming back is getting off. And Cortland's got nothing on the, no sidewalk. It's just grass on the other side. So I don't know how people are. I don't know where they're going. I don't know how they're getting anywhere when they're coming, going, uh.
Well, there's a bus stop on the grass, across the street from here.
Yeah, yeah. And that's it.
Yeah, it's on the grass. There's no pole up there.
And this says that you're supposed to have an eight-foot wide, thirty-six inch, uh, thirty-six inch wide, eight-foot long pad. So you improve this, do you have to improve that? It, it, well, that's on Cortland's side, so that'd be theirs anyway. But, you know, that would be up to them. But this, this, I think, is your starting point. If you got, if you all agree that, you know, this is the concept and they agree to it and you can discuss, you know, payment and who would do it. The good thing is, we have a contractor who's coming back next year. So if the board can come to agreement with the Town of Cortland and say, okay, this is, this is our concept. We like it. What do you think? Give us your thoughts. And we have a contractor. Maybe we can split money and maybe we. And we have a contractor, maybe we can split money and maybe we can.
Yeah, I mean, with all four corners, you're gonna, that's gonna be a big, it's a big number.
It's a big number. This is not, this is a project in itself, uh, you know, we've.
Now, George, as we are now, could we actually install a stop bar for, for, for the time being?
I think there's one.
Because we don't have a stop bar there now, do we?
Oh, you know what? There's, uh, when we repaved it, we took it out. We have to move it back.
So, I, I would, I would recommend that we get the scoop and maybe install a stop bar, um, soon.
Yes.
You know, I, I don't think there's one there at all now.
Yeah, there, you can see it's faint, it's right under the, um, the hatching for the crosswalk. It's, was there.
Yeah, but I don't think with the new paving.
Yeah, with new pavement, it's not, so it got cold. They did some of the painting, but I don't think they did all of it.
Yeah, a lot of striping hasn't been done.
So.
All right, so, thank you, thank you for the drawing.
No problem.
The sketch, the drawing.
Sketch, as we call it.
And, uh, we'll send it to the town and see what they come back with.
Now, as far as getting CHIPS money, right? We're gonna have to abide by all of the DOT and county to get, to use that money on any of this project. And you're looking at a significant amount of work then.
Yeah.
To, to get to their standards.
Yes. So, if, are, are we using CHIPS money for this? How much?
I mean, do we even, where, where are we at with CHIPS money? Do we even have any?
How much are we getting CHIPS money at annual basis?
Sixty thousand.
Okay, so, you can apply it to your other two roads. So, you can say, okay, if CHIPS says, oh, what did you improve? You say, I, I improved Broadway, I improved Burke. Here you go, it's all ADA compliant. This one, you're, you're doing on your own. You're not applying your CHIPS money to this project. So, for Bannon Avenue. So, that way you're, you're, you're compliant with that. So, you'd, you'd, you'd get some other, like, maybe from the town.
Yeah, well, if you have complaints logged, like you said, we can give them to the town as well.
Yes, yes.
Along with this drawing.
And a complaint came from the town resident.
Yeah, so it's there.
By the way.
So, so we're, you're doing your part in good faith to work with them to get this resolved, so. Just replacing the ramps kinda as they are.
No, I like, I, I, I mean, you could just replace the ramps and extend the crosswalk, put your walk time, like you said, it increases dramatically. That's another fifteen to twenty feet.
Yeah.
I mean, if you shrink that and put that, uh, the radius out, I mean, it shrinks that road. It's, it's actually a nicer, aesthetically, it's nicer. You know, not only nicer, it, it's safer.
Yeah. So, I could see this costing, you know, at the rates that we got, you know, this could easily be twenty thousand dollars worth of curb and sidewalk and everything, so that.
Yeah.
And you do both of them, that's forty thou, fifty thousand, you know, so.
Yeah, I mean, you extended the curb way down on this side. Yeah, you know.
There's a big hill there, it's a drop there.
No, you have to, you have to, to, to finish the radius.
But, I mean, this is, you know, our first glance, first blush at it. And, uh, without the benefit of, you know, the survey for spot elevations to comply with this heavy list of, uh, DOT standards. But when somebody complains, you gotta go down a certain path, so, just to protect yourself.
We've been on notice, we're put on notice.
You've been put on notice, so that's, that's the problem.
Now, it has to be addressed. But we want people, once again, we want everyone to be safe. We don't want anyone to get hurt and, uh, you know, there's a lot of more walkers in today's world too. There's a lot of people out.
If someone was coming down, uh, walking down Bannon and if you ever wanted to put sidewalks up Bannon, this kinda leads you in that direction as well. So, it sets you up for the next, if you ever wanted to do something. So, someone coming out of the dentist, go walk down, go to the bus stop, take, go home, whatever. Or even walk, you know, go to the first driveway with the sidewalks, whatever. It, it sets you up for the next future.
Well, it keeps the pedestrian safe rounding that corner. If you bring it to the first driveway. Then you're gonna have an exit ramp.
You're kicking can.
Now, you're just putting more, more ramps in, so.
Yeah, ramps and ramps and ramps, so.
And the town might wanna consider also a crosswalk across Kingsbury.
Correct.
At that point too, while they're, you know.
Right, so that person that just got off the bus going east, maybe they wanna cross the road and maybe they wanna crosswalk on the other side. Or maybe they wanna bring them to this, to this intersection across, uh, what is it, Glenwood Drive? I don't know.
See how this just blossoms?
It, it, it does. But we, we, I think we did, the village did its part and here's the story, so.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, George.
You're welcome.
All right. Did you have anything else while you were here for us?
Um, no, we'll keep you posted on, uh, when the contractor comes back.
Okay.
Winter weather, so we're kinda shut down.
Yeah.
So, we'll pick it back up in the spring. And then we'll talk about roads, future roads, you know, what you have for capital, because the capital projects come around January, February. We start talking budget and what we're gonna do next, uh, this is coming here.
And the WIP grant, we're gonna, uh, get it, uh, noticed by sometime in January.
So, that's another thing. So, treatment plan, the W keep, uh, that grant's gonna come back, so we find out where that is. And then we can move forward with the sewer treatment plant, so.
Lots going on.
Lots going on. And then AMS, I did, didn't mention it before, but, um, they did supply us a whole list of responses. And we check it against the DEC guidelines and they all look good. So, they did a, a really thorough job in their, in their responses. So, uh, we got, we're gonna finish our review, uh, probably next week. We just got it last week, their responses, so we should be able to finish it up, uh, this week or next week and get that to the board. I know the planning board sent a letter and with comments and, as Dave mentioned, that's all been addressed, so. So, that's, that's, it'd be nice to start that project, right?
Great.
Busy, busy.
Busy, busy.
Thank you, George.
Thank you, George.
Good night, George.
Thanks, George. Good night, thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
Thank you.
So, this is something we do, overriding the New York State property tax cap. Um, it's something we do every year. We have to authorize it ahead of time. It has to be in place in case we have to override the two percent cap that the state has. So, I'm going to read the resolution and then I'll, uh, ask, uh, any questions on that, on a question. So, whereas the state legislature and the governor enacted legislation that establishes a property tax levy cap on the amount that a local government's property tax levy can increase each year. And whereas under this law, the total amount to be raised through property tax is charged on the municipality's taxable assessed value of property will be capped at two percent or the rate of inflation, whichever is less, with some exceptions. And whereas the state legislation provides for local governments to override the cap to protect the village from unforeseen financial circumstances. Whereas state legislation requires that in event that an override is necessary, the law enabling it must be, or already have been adopted by the Board of Trustees. And whereas local law introductory number one of twenty twenty-four has been drafted to override the property tax levy cap in law enacted by state legislature if necessary. And whereas a public hearing was held and closed on January second, twenty twenty-four.
You have to open the public hearing.
Yes, I'm, I'm just reading this.
Just don't take your vote and then open it.
Okay, sorry, so that the public can, can also comment, sorry. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the Village Board of Trustees hereby adopts local law number one, twenty twenty-four, to override the property tax levy cap, tax cap. Holy cow, say that twenty times fast. Law enacted by state legislature. And be further resolved that the village clerk be and hereby is directed to enter said local law in the minutes of this meeting and in the local law book of the Village of Buchanan and to give due notice to the adoption of said local law to the Secretary of State of New York. So, we are going to vote on that. But first, we're going to open the public hearing. Missed that. Okay, so I'd like to open, uh, make a motion to open the public hearing, um, on the local law overriding the property tax levy cap enacted by the state, uh, New York State Legislature. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the public hearing is open. Would any board members like to comment? It's something we do every year.
Yep, I'm good.
Any, any comments from the public on this? If no comments, I will, um, close the public hearing. I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing on the ta, property tax override.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I have read the resolution. And, um, so we will now take a vote on the resolution. I'd like to make, um, a motion on what I just read, the resolution authorizing the local law overriding the property tax levy cap. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Okay. Whoop, I jumped ahead of myself there. Okay, so the next is, I'd like to make a motion to open the, um, public hearing, uh, for amending chapter one eighty-nine point five entitled Limited Parking For Snow Emergencies. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, this was brought up by, um, the board about changing our parking regulations during, uh, snowfall. And, um, right now, there's no parking from December first to April first. There are, um, in here, uh, there's certain new, uh, parts to this. And one of them is upon the prediction of snow and ice accumulation of two or more inches of snow, no vehicle of any kind shall be allowed to remain standing parked on any street or public highway until the snow has ended and the road has been cleared of snow. Vehicles must be relocated to off-street locations and may be parked on the village right-of-way area directly in front of the vehicle owner's residence, except that vehicles may not be parked on any part of a street, sidewalk or curb. All vehicles in violation of this subsection are subject to fines and or towing, towing at the owner's expense. Another change is limited parking due to snow emergencies will be announced. And this is one thing I would really like to change, uh, announced by the mayor, who will publicly declare a snow emergency. And/or if we can add, um, that the village clerk, um, could, because Cindy does send those code reds out. So, uh, they also can be done on an automatic, like it's nobody's voice. It's, it's just automatically generated and, you know, a, a voice produces the message. So, I think, you know, if, if the mayor's not available or, you know, um, Cindy needs to do it quickly, that she can, she can do that. So, um, to, so the mayor or, uh, the clerk, town, village clerk, uh, will declare, um, well, she can't declare a smoke, it's no emergency, but she can do the, uh, the, uh, the code red. And will notify residents via code red and any other social media platforms, including but not limited to the Village of Buchanan website and the Village of Buchanan Facebook.
Which, which, Facebook will be removed?
Okay.
Nope.
Okay.
But we will at some point, correct?
You have to create a new one and have the, have the rights. Well, you can keep it in there.
You just keep it in there. Otherwise, you gotta change it again, so you just keep it in there.
Most every municipality in the world uses that as a form of information.
Yeah, so, um, penalties, any person violating any provisions under this article shall upon conviction be punished by a minimum fine of one hundred dollars. It used to be fifteen. And a maximum fine not exceeding two hundred and fifty dollars for each offense. Yeah.
Go to the next page. Yeah, read that section.
Oh, yeah, well, wait a minute.
Read that section.
Starting with B. Any person violating any of the provisions of this article as herein, herein before provided in section A of this section and who, upon conviction, has been found to be a second or multiple offender of that applicable offense within thirty-six months of the last conviction or convictions, shall be punishable by a fine which shall not be less than.
That's a number you have to decide.
Yeah, you're doing a hundred, I think, per violation for the first time, right?
Right.
So, you gotta pick a number, because this said fifty, so it doesn't make sense if.
Yeah, one's a hundred. And then the max for the other one is two fifty, so if it's a multiple offender, over two fifty, what, what does the board, uh, feel is appropriate?
In the minimum or the maximum?
Yeah.
For a multiple offender.
So, should, it should start at two fifty for the minimum. And the maximum, if it's somebody that just, five hundred? Is the board agreeable to that?
Yes.
Because this is someone that just intentionally. Okay, thank you. Um, and the last, the owner or operator of any motor vehicle parked in violation of one eighty-nine dash four, one eighty-nine dash five and one eighty-nine da, dash six, in addition to any other penalties which may be imposed, shall be liable for any expenses incurred by the village in towing said unlawfully parked motor vehicle. Such charges not to exceed the actual cost incurred, together with any charges for storage. Such storage charges being the customary fees charged by the towing company. So, those are the changes going into the law. Okay, um, and I just wanna say that, you know, I don't know if it's climate change, I don't know if the world is changing, but we've had mild winters. But I heard today that we have a pretty massive storm headed from the west here for the weekend. So, we will, we will have it, the first test run of this this weekend, I guess. Okay, any comments from the floor, uh, the board before I put comments out to the public?
I'm, I'm actually, uh, I was a big, uh, I pushed for this because I believe it's time for a change in this, in this law. I'm glad that we're making a move here and, and, uh, I think with you, what you just said, with climate change and as well as accommodating the community, I think that this is a good move in the right direction.
Any other?
I'd, I'd like to just say, I think it's a fair compromise to what we, what we had existing, so, um, yeah, that's it. Well, I have a couple things to say. I just have a couple questions first.
Sure.
As far as the fines and or towing, you know, is that gonna happen during the storm? So, there's a storm going on out there, we're gonna have our police officers out there, you know, writing tickets? Or we're gonna have a tow truck company going out there?
Would they be doing that anyway now, wouldn't they?
Well, we haven't been doing that.
But you would be doing it anyway if they were parked overnight.
Right, but my, my question is, is it safe for them to be out there during the storm? If the highway foreman calls up and says, I got five cars parked on Lindsay Avenue, you know, I need a ticket written to them.
But if that happened tonight, it could be the same. Right, if there was a, a storm tonight and there was five cars on Lindsay Avenue.
Right, right, but, like, well, that's the follow-up of my next question, because I, I've been foreman for many years. Now, this has been in place for a long time. And really, I, I haven't seen really a problem with people getting their cars off the roads. Because typically what happens is when this first starts on December first, that there's cars parked out there, people do forget that's the timeframe to start. The police will just give them a warning, there's no storm going on. And that usually, you know, I was one of them, I forget December first or second, I get a warning. I actually got a ticket once to the highway foreman. And the first one that gets a phone call, I fell asleep at ten o'clock, I got the ticket, I was wrong. Guess what? I learned from that lesson. But I just, you know, I understand everyone's looking for this to go through. Uh, I, I'm a believer that if something that's been working for years and makes our snowplowing program one of the best around, if not the best around, I, I just don't like changing things that, you know, don't need changing. I understand the argument about the, the, uh, the weather change and, and climate and all that. I just, you know, I will be voting against this, you know, but I ha, I just feel in my heart that's the best thing to do. You know, and like I said, I haven't really seen any problems during the years I've been foreman or working for the village where people were having to leave their cars on the road. And I just think it's a lot, you know, we're gonna rely on code red or someone, you know, we're gonna write tickets to people and they're gonna say, I, I don't have code red. I don't, I, I didn't, I didn't know what was going on, I fell asleep, I didn't know there was a storm coming. There's gonna be all kinds of excuses coming our way. So, you know, I'm just, I'm gonna, I was always honest with the board about how I felt about it. You know, and I understand everyone's feelings about it, but for me, I, I just can't go forth with that.
You know, I, I appreciate that. I, you know, I, I think the end result, I'm in agreement with you, I want the cars off for a storm as well. But I think the way the law has been written, I, I think there is time for a change. And I, I've looked into this personally, there, there's a lot of other municipalities in the area that do what, what we're attempting to do here and change. And I just think it's a better solution for the residents going forward. But I think the end result, I'm in a hundred percent agreement. When there's a storm coming, I want all the roads clean too. And that's, that's the intent of the law.
I respect your opinion.
Yeah.
No, and I understand what you're saying, Bob, too. I, I appreciate what you're saying because you lived the life. And, um, I'm, I'm willing to give it a try. And, you know, if it ends up becoming an issue and the weather changes back and it's crazy and this isn't working, then, you know, the code would have to be looked at again. But, um, I'm willing to give it a whirl. Any comments from the floor? Yes, sir? Oh, come up to the podium, please.
I had, I had brought this up, the, one other meeting. And, um, the, the whole bit, Bob, with, um, not parking on the street from twelve until seven or five, what happens when it snows all day? I can park my, all my cars out on the street, you could have three feet of snow and you can't give me a ticket. So what's the big deal?
Well, what I found out during a day working, early as I, early as I ever worked, people kept their cars off the road. Most people kept their cars off the road when it was snowing during the day, or, or they were at work. It hasn't really been a problem during the day.
But, but the point is, you don't really have to.
You're right, you don't have to. But when it does snow, it snows.
Right.
You know, I respect your opinion, you know, I mean, I'm just, that you, I'm answering your question. Most people during the day are either working or they leave their cars off the road. Most people in this village, since I've worked here, their cars are off the road during any snowstorm. No doubt about that. But now we're gonna ticket people for, for leaving it, leaving it because we're leaving it very, in my opinion, it's kind of a, we're relying on the mayor or someone to put out there a snow emergency for a storm that may or may not come. And people are gonna may or may not hear that, that warning.
Well, I think, actually, I, I gotta be honest with you, I think $250 is way out of line for a first offense for, uh, parking on the street. I think that's like...
Yeah, that's, that's for multiple.
Yeah.
It's 100.
100 dollars.
It's a, it's a 100 for the first offense.
Yeah.
Don't you think 100's a little, a little pricey? For, for first offense?
You're gonna, if it's, if it's overtime, you're gonna pay more than overtime to get the guys to go out there, there's no plow again. Think about that.
There, there's gotta be a compromise somewhere, right? So you have to, you have to, you have to be able to make people understand that, like, when the situation comes up, they have to get the car off the road.
Right, but now for 100 dollars, the first offense? I, I mean, listen, I, I'll give you 50 dollars. Even 50, 25, it should be 25, 50, 75, 100, and then go up from there. But I think, I, I think this is a little much. What are other towns and villages charging for a first offense? Does anybody know? Did you just, you just, I mean, where'd you get this figure from?
We used to be at 15. That, that was the, what was in the code, before we're changing it. It was 15. And, um...
And, and it was at 15, and you were able to park your car in the street all day, whether you had a snowstorm or not? So now, you can't park on the street, which is fine during a snowstorm, and now you're starting right at 100.
And I think when this first rolls out, I, I think, you know, in fairness to everyone, I, I think, you know, we have to have conversations with people so that they're all on board, because I, I, we need the cars off the road, but in the same token, you know, we want to be fair to the residents too. So I'm not sure, you know, if somebody, I don't know, whether our highway department, somebody can just go knock on the person's door and say, "Hey, you gotta get the, the car off the road, we're, we're coming through to plow." You know, there's, because we're so small here, you know, it's, we should be able to work with one another too.
Right. Right, I agree. You're right.
And no can be wrong, I don't think it's a huge problem to start with. I just don't think we want to, in my opinion, we shouldn't even change it, because most people do keep their cars off the road, there's very few people.
I would, I would have to disagree with that, Bob. I, I've, I see the jockey, you know, that goes on, on, on my street alone.
During the day, yes.
No, at night. Okay? I, I see it, I live it.
Oh, I, I'm not, I'm saying, everyone has gotten through all these years doing that, I understand that.
And that's what this gentleman's trying to say too, is he, he's got to jockey cars around every night, even when it's not snowing.
And I, and I understand the frustration, I do it myself.
And I, I park in my neighbors', I ask my neighbor if I could park in his driveway, so I move one car, and I have to inconvenience him. If he's gotta get out in the middle of the night, I mean, okay, yeah, I gotta get up and move my car from him, I mean, it's not...
What I, what I see when I was working, that most people find a way to get their vehicle off the road during these storms, and during night and during storms, when they were asked to do it.
And when it makes sense.
And I understand all the frustrations about, about move, jockeying your cars around. A lot of people do live that, you got four people in your house, working times and school time.
But when it makes sense, I agree with it, but you've gotta take last year, we had, what? We had nothing last year. And every night, and then I tore up my lawn, and it, it's just, it's just a little common sense.
Well, I understand the frustration, I really do.
You know?
I'm fortunate, I have, I have tug, I, I have two cutouts, right? So I have my First Street side and my Tate Avenue side. I have my, a good friend of mine who lives on the opposite corner, who has two children home from college right now, and he's parking in my Tate Avenue side because he's gotta get the cars off the street, doesn't have the room.
And, and no snow.
So, exactly. So I, I see your, I see your point, and, you know, that's why I'm, I'm, I'm for this resolution.
I, I just, again, I just think starting at 100 dollars is, is, is quite a bit.
So can we have this discussion now then, while, while this gentleman's here?
So, what would the board, would the board like to change the 100 dollar, um, for their first, the minimum fine of 100 dollars? It was 15, so...
But where did we get the 100 dollars from anyway?
I did not write this.
Steph, did you, did you write?
I probably took it from one of the municipalities locally.
So then, so then, so then why don't we start it at, so then why don't we start it at 50? Is, is, is anybody against that?
No, I'm not against it, but it's gotta be at least 50, because it's gotta count.
Right.
Because if it doesn't, then they're just gonna do it, pay it. You know, the 15 dollars was a joke. You know, 50 dollars isn't a joke.
Right.
Okay, so we'll change it to 50.
Thank you for, for bringing that.
We're trying to, we're trying to work with everybody, and make a compromise.
This is a community effort, and I wish more people were here to speak about it, because then we'd really know what, where we want to be. But, I mean...
Yeah, I got, I guess, some of the neighbors up the street, they actually park on their front lawn. They got two cars on their front lawn.
And then they're tracking mud and everything into the street, which makes it an eyesore for the neighbor.
To, to get...
And I get it.
You know?
And, and I, I don't want to say this, because I'm not saying anything negative, but technically, in our code, you're not supposed to...
You're not supposed to park on your front lawn, I got you.
But then, but I understand too, but they have to get their car off the road. So it's like...
It's a double-edged sword. It, it really is.
Right. It is a double-edged sword, it is.
And though, in the past too, what we have seen, it's especially in the wintertime, we do have occasional houses where there's overcrowding, and that, that is a direct, you know, that's directing indication to us that there's a problem at that property. But, you know, more and more people, you know, they have kids, they have teenagers, they, you know, the husband has a car, the wife has a car, they both work, then the kids and...
Everybody needs a car today. I mean, let's face it, do kids need a car? If you have two kids, three kids, that's three extra cars, two extra cars.
Everybody's got a car, yeah.
You know? It's not like it was years ago.
No, no.
It's different.
So, I, I like this idea, I think it's time for a change. I think we were stuck in the mud, it was antiquated, it's time to move on. The 50 dollars, I like, I'm glad that you brought that up, I really am. I think it was a little steep at 100, you know, that is, that is a lot to ask. Because by the time this gets rolling and gets approved and everybody finds out about it, you don't want to crack everybody for 100 dollars right out of the gate.
You, you don't.
No.
You don't.
Excuse me, do you want to do, um, the second offense?
Okay, so on the, the second...
Went to 250, do you want to do 150? What do you, do you want to change that one as well?
So that, the max, or do you want to put that at 100?
100.
No, I, I think we should go to 100 on that, 50 to 100.
Yep.
Okay.
I mean, whatever you guys think.
Yep.
It's fair enough, and I think it's a, at a high enough number where people are gonna take action and do what they gotta do.
Good, okay.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I would just like to say, uh, I respect everyone's opinion.
Yes.
You know, hopefully people respect mine, and that's what we do. I'm not gonna, you know, vote for this, it's nothing against anybody personally or anything like that, just I have to stand by my guns and...
You, Bob, you have every right to your opinion.
Thank you.
You know?
Yeah.
And Bob, you lived the life, so you know, you, you're coming from a different, different thought process.
I think it impacts other streets more than others, some streets more than others within the village, that, you know, some streets aren't, it's conducive.
You know, we did, we did quickly talk about that, Lindsay Avenue. Are there certain streets that we really have to look at?
Well, yeah, is that, is that in there?
No. Did you put it in there? I didn't see it, Steph.
No.
There's certain...
I thought we didn't want it on Tate, Lindsay, and Westchester.
We, we had talked last time about, uh, exceptions to that. Lindsay Avenue is, is a tough road as it is, there's just not a lot of room there.
As well as Tate and Westchester.
So, when you look at the Village Buchanan, like you as a DPW guy, what do you look as a snow evacuation route, out of the, out of the canyon?
Or the main roads?
So which...
Westchester, Tate, Lindsay.
There you have it, so they should be...
Lindsay, Lindsay's a tough road because it's narrow, that's really a three-lane road, not, you know, not a three-lane...
They have to follow the old laws that way, they say.
Right.
I, I, I don't know how you're gonna do that.
I know, it's gonna get a little tough, it's gonna get...
I think it's gotta follow suit with everything. Um, because even snow emergency evacuation routes should be clear.
Yeah.
Right.
All times.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, you know what?
They don't need to be more clear when it's not snowing.
Right. So I, I don't think it applies to that.
I don't either.
Alright. You know what? The, we're changing the code, so then if it, if there's tweaks that have to be done, then just have another public hearing after, you know, after you see how it works out, that's all.
Sometimes you gotta pivot.
Yeah. That's it. And Bob, I do, I do respect your opinion, um, so...
And, and so do I, Bob. I, I, you know, I, I do, you know, but...
But thank you for speaking your truth.
We all can agree on all the time, that's why...
And hi, Eileen, how are you?
I'm good, I'm good. I'm glad you reduced the price, I agree with the gentleman before. 100, I think Croton, if I'm not mistaken, chart is 50?
Oh, okay.
Okay.
At the first offense? Is that correct? Do you know, Marcus?
No, I don't know.
Alright, because I didn't know where 100 came from either, it was like a flip of a coin, um, but...
Well, I search for these things, and I look at other municipalities, it kind of is, and then they talk about it, the board will discuss it and make the decision, which they did.
Right, and it's no rhyme or reason.
I don't see that.
But I do, I do thank you for the 50. Um, I have a question on, does anybody know how many people are registered for code red?
No.
Hello?
Um, I...
Wait, no, I do know. About, I think it goes out to 1,100 phone numbers.
1,100 phone numbers?
That's a lot, considering the size of our village.
I agree, that is a lot.
Well, maybe some cell phones are in there too, you know?
But it is something that we should put out there.
I know, I get it on both.
Yeah, with no notice to anybody except for this public hearing? You know?
It's on every single newsletter.
Did you say you're not putting it on Facebook?
We had an issue with Facebook.
We took Facebook down.
We took Facebook down temporarily. But it's on every single newsletter that everybody receives, the code red, email blast is on every single newsletter.
We go through this every meeting about communication.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to know how many people are on code red? That was all. Um, if we can all kind of suggest to our neighbors, get on code red.
Yep.
Otherwise, you're gonna get a 50 dollar fine if you're on the street. I came down Lindsay Avenue to come to the meeting tonight, you can't navigate that without snow. So, that street is just awful, um, with snow, so...
I would agree, and it's, it's worse in the morning when you have buses coming down and you're, okay, it's, so, yeah, we know Lindsay's an issue.
Yeah, Lindsay is really bad.
Always has been.
But anyway, I just wanted to concur with the gentleman about the 50 and 100 dollar fine, and just wanted to know how many people were on code red, so if we can all check in on a neighbor, check in on somebody, just make sure that they're registered. Um, I still don't hear it, if you leave a message. I don't need to, but that's me, for whatever reason. Um, is there a way to put that on a text?
Yeah.
Yeah, I get it.
Because the town of Carlin does it on text.
No, I'm asking, can the village put it on a text?
No, I agree, but we have to figure that out, how to do it.
Cindy does it, yeah.
Code red does go out on a text, but you have to put your cell phone number for code red.
Okay, that's fine.
Yes.
Alright, as long, is that also on the newsletter? Marcus, is that on the newsletter, or so that it'll go out on a text?
I think if you sign up for code red, it will say, "Do you want a phone or a text?" Or something else. An email. I get a text, an email, and a phone call.
I get all three myself.
Because I did it all.
I get all, I get all, I get all.
I knew it worked.
Okay, alright.
You know what, I think, I think what might be, because you know what, we, we send the newsletter out and, and 99%, nobody reads it, but they'll look at the calendar, that's the first thing, that's what goes up on the refrigerator. So Cindy, um, and Sharon, the next, uh, the next, uh, the next newsletter that goes out, if, somewhere on that calendar area, if we could just put, I know it's tight, but somewhere... Oh, that's right, that's right, we changed that.
The new, yeah, it just went out, we got it last week.
Yeah, I totally forgot about that.
Not too many residents are happy about that either.
Yeah.
Was there a reason for that?
Bold and red again.
Yeah, yeah.
To get people on, to get people on.
So, we're not gonna get a newsletter then?
You got the four months.
You got the four, you got...
You only get three, three newsletters a year?
No, 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 no. The newsletter is going out every month, the calendar is going out four times a year.
Right.
The calendars, however, that were sent out, I just, there's one question. I know we had seen a, a version, the board did, that was color-coordinated. The ones that we received in the mail, however, were black and white. I don't know if it's possible, I don't know if the printer has the capability of printing in color, but it may be...
Big bucks.
Lot of money for color.
I got color.
That was a mistake.
No.
You don't get the code red messages, but you get the colored, your calendar, your special...
I guess, put it again.
Oh, good, I'm not alone, I, I didn't never think I'm alone anyway, but, okay. Um, alright, so it has to be, you have to let them know your cell number to get a text.
Yeah, I'll help you if you want. So here are the last statistics.
I don't need help on this.
Attempted calls says 1749, but they only reached 724 numbers, the code red.
Wow, that's not good.
And there's eight hundred and what, twenty-five households?
Yes.
So, we're not reaching everyone.
No, so, that's my question. If you're not reaching everybody, how is this new plan going to be as effective other than making money? By charging them fifty dollars each time?
Well, we're not looking to make money, we're just looking to get people off the road when we, when they need to be, but.
Yeah, but the problem is, if you only have seven hundred out of twenty-two, how, twenty-two hundred households, you guys have to come up with a better plan. I don't know what the, what it is.
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred and twenty-five households.
Eight hundred households?
Seven twenty, yeah, eight hundred households.
Oh, okay. Oh, seven twenty-five? Seven twenty-four?
Yeah, we're getting pretty close.
Yeah, that's pretty good. Oh, all right.
We're missing, we're missing a, there's a gap.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Eileen. Any other comments before I close the public hearing? Okay, and I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and I'll be enough.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read the resolution.
I'm going to go after the resolution.
Whereas the resolution was duly adopted by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Buchanan for a public hearing to be held by said village board at the municipal building, two thirty-six Tate Avenue, Buchanan, to hear all interested parties on a proposed local law amending chapter one eighty-nine point five, entitled limited parking to the code of the Village of Buchanan, and whereas a notice of said public hearing was duly advertised in the official local newspaper, and whereas said public hearing was duly held at a regularly scheduled meeting of the Village of Buchanan Board, January second, twenty twenty-four, at seven P M, at the municipal building, two thirty-six Tate Avenue, Buchanan, New York, and all parties in attendance were permitted an opportunity to speak on behalf of or in opposition to said proposed local law or any part thereof. And whereas the Board of Trustees of the Village of Buchanan, after due deliberation, finds it in the best interest of the Village of Buchanan to adopt said local law, now be it therefore resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Buchanan hereby adopt said local law number two, twenty twenty-four, amending chapter one eighty-nine point five of the code of the Village of Buchanan, a copy of which is attached hereto and made a part of this resolution. And be it further resolved that the village clerk be and hereby is directed to enter said local law in the minutes of this meeting and in the local law book of the Village of Buchanan, and to give due notice of the adoption of said local law to the Secretary of the State of the State of New York. So, can I have a motion? I have, I'll make a motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
That's me.
Okay. All right, it passes.
So if I may, looking at the weather, expecting eight, five to eight inches on between Saturday and Sunday, so this takes probably five tomorrow, so you gotta do a Code Red, yes.
All right.
I saw rain.
Yeah, I saw the weather, five to eight inches predicted, it's snow. But it might be all rain, I don't know. Depends what happens.
Well, we'll find out this weekend, won't we?
We're just asking for people to be patient and understanding while we figure it out.
So, the next is something we do every year, it's that time of the year again. The general election is on Tuesday, March nineteenth. So whereas the next general village election shall be held on Tuesday, March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, and whereas according to the New York State Election Law fifteen dash one oh four sub three, the Board of Trustees of the Village shall adopt the resolution which states the polling place in each election district and the hours during which the polls shall be open. Now be it therefore resolved that the polling places to the next general village election for District one and two are located in the community room on the second floor of the municipal building, two thirty-six Tate Avenue, Buchanan, New York. Be it further resolved that the hours which the polls shall be open will be between the hours of six A M and nine P M. And, we always have elections here on the second floor, so, nothing has changed for quite some time there. So, I'd like to make a motion. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We have to appoint a registrar and deputy registrar of vital statistics. So this is something we need. Whereas it is necessary to appoint a registrar and deputy registrar of vital statistics for the Village of Buchanan, now be it therefore resolved, the mayor hereby appoints Cynthia Kemter as registrar and Sharon Murphy as deputy registrar of vital statistics of the Village of Buchanan for a period of two years from January first, twenty twenty-four, through December thirty-first of twenty twenty-five. And Cindy, if you would like to say what, what the vital statistics are. No, I'm getting the, no Teresa. Share that with us, please, thank you.
Just as really for the death certificates and any birth certificates that happen.
So, if there's a death or a birth in the village, that, that's, okay.
That's what it's for.
Okay. All right. Another job for you. There you go. So I'd like to make a motion, appointing Cindy as a registrar and Sharon as a deputy registrar. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, the next is a motion to approve the fund balance policy, and I would like Marcus to go over this, please.
Sure, we discussed this some time ago, recommended to the village board for our financial position to do a fund balance policy, which actually helps us with the bond rating, and the board did approve a bond that we probably will be taking up in August or something like that of this year. So this actually has helped us with the rating, and what also helps us for the rate that we're going to get. So this sets a fund balance policy to how the money could be used, anything above the surplus of fifteen percent. And that fifteen percent came with discussing with our financial advisors, based on the size of our village, and based on our financial condition with the Indian Point shutting down. So that's their recommendation as well. The board could always modify in the future. Right at this point, we're above that number, so we have a, we have a cushion, and, and the village has actually surplus to be used for future emergencies at the same time. So it's like, it's like putting money aside for savings for emergencies, that's all it is.
Any questions from the board? Any other comments? So I'd like to make a motion to approve the fund balance policy that we have received. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next is, I'm going to be making a motion in a minute for to add a sewer and wastewater connection fee and stormwater fee to the village fee schedule. Marcus, I don't know if you want to go over this, because there's different categories to this, and within the village, outside the village. We had discussed this at one of the workshops.
Yeah, we discussed it, I think, probably two workshops already. This is to set up a new fee for new connections connecting to our sanitary sewer system, as well as our stormwater system. So for example, a per dwelling unit of, of a, a single family, one, two, or three family house would be a hundred and twenty-four dollars for a connection, per dwelling unit. A hotel, we had a hotel in the future, it would be a hundred and twenty-four dollars for in the village, a hundred and sixty-one dollars for outside the village. So any connection outside the village will be a little bit higher, per uni, per room or per unit, exactly. Yeah, per, yeah, per room, per unit. And then when it comes to non-residentiality, based on the size of the, of the development, and that ranges from one hundred seventy-eight dollars in the village, two hundred thirty-one dollars outside the village, all the way to eight hundred ninety-two dollars to, to one thousand one hundred fifty-nine dollars. The storm sewer connection is a one-time fee of six hundred dollars when in the village, seven fifty outside village. But again, these are all one-time fees at the time, at the time of construction. So it's a fee to offset our costs, but also bring some additional revenue to the village to offset the tax rate increases in the future.
And, just for some historical background, we almost did have a hotel. There was someone at one point that was interested in putting a hotel here in the village. And that was off of Broadway Blakely area.
Interesting, okay.
Little histor, little historical information, that's all. So, I'd like to make a motion to add the sewer wastewater connection fee and stormwater fee to the village fee schedule. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, the next is to approve the, of hiring a J H W Plan Review Service for Plan Review as determined by the building inspector. We had a discussion on this at the workshop.
Yeah, we had a discussion on this. I'll let Peter explain some more. Peter does a lot of research on the company. This is for the two developments we discussed, AMS and the Carbone project. In order to continue the process going forward, not slow down the development, and also not overwhelm the building department, this is a specific company looking at code enforcement, and also fire protection services being provided by the developer, and that fee is paid out of the building permit fee, so there's no cost to the taxpayers as well. So I'll let Peter explain some of the research he did and found this company.
Yes, I discussed the, this particular company with multiple other municipal inspectors. Harrison, Hastings, Borchester, Mount Pleasant, they all use this company, because these gentlemen were actually New York State Code Enforcement issuance people. They designed all our code. So when they do a plan review, it's based on the actual code, and everything that they find has a code reference as to why they're saying it. Unlike a lot of other companies that just say, this is an issue, this is an issue. They specifically give you the actual New York State reference of why it's a problem or what has to be done. And I would like to take the liability over the village and the building department with that type of review. If something gets overlooked or missed, we don't want to have a problem later, and that's why, they're all engineers and code officials. So that's why I've recommended that we go that route. There's only so many hours in the week, and.
And I know you put a lot of time in, and you're late all the time too, so yes.
Thank you.
We would, we would just have put a living place here for you.
I would appreciate that.
Yeah. Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
All right.
So Peter, these are all, you said they're engineers, they're onsite?
They're, they're. No, they're, they're not onsite. They are.
They ought to be onsite.
No, they are not onsite. We would be doing the inspections.
You're going to, they're going to consult you on your onsite inspection?
Yes. We're going to explain.
Their plan review.
They're reviewing the plan, yeah, they're reviewing the plan.
And you're going to do the inspection on, on everything?
Pretty much, pretty much New York State allows, in a multiple.
So the stormwater system?
That should be George's.
That's the engineer. Yeah, we're, we're building, you know. Sorry, yes, Anthony, I'm sorry, that's, that's George.
Yeah, I just wanted to know, so when, when they're into the stormwater and drainage and, and the footings and everything like that.
The footings are made, plumbing, you know, the building, the structure, all of that is on the building department. George would be in charge of the, the, that.
All right, I didn't know if they're.
No, no, it's okay. I understand what you're saying.
They're going to consult with you for the footings, for the concrete pours, and, and who's going to, the slump tests and, and.
All of that.
All of that.
All of that. They, they, we have all the information from them based on what they, you know, what it should be for that.
Okay.
When they do the review.
It's just really another pair of eyes on the project.
No, it's important.
For the review, yeah, it's important.
There's a tremendous amount of work that's going to go involved, especially with the foundation.
Yes.
With the parking structure especially.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is because it is a parking structure, and it's going to be a lot of concrete. None of that is precast, right? It's all, it's all formed?
I believe it was all formed. I didn't see any precasted, that's the plan.
I heard three, I heard three feet somewhere, I heard.
For the, yeah, for the pores, what Anthony's saying. He's saying it's a precast or you're dropping pieces.
No, that's not, it's, it's all, from what I saw on the drawings, it's all poured in place.
Yeah, that's what it is.
I didn't see anything precast.
No.
All right, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the retention of the J H W Plan Review Services for Plan Review as determined by the building inspector. Can I have a second?
I second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Think it's a great idea?
Yeah. Justice Report, November twenty twenty-three, the amount was three thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars. Police report, Steve, that's you?
Yes, for the month of November.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's okay for you to do that?
No, potential, we, we discussed.
Oh, no, this is nine A.
Not nine A.
Oh, Lord. Oh my, I crossed it off because I sidewalked, never mind. Wait, never mind.
So, real quick? Let's throw that one.
Go ahead, Marcus, I'm sorry. This is about a discussion of a potential sidewalk on nine A.
Correct, correct. So let, let the board know and the public, during the Carbone and the AMS project, the idea is to continue sidewalks along Route nine from the high school as far down into the village as we can. So AMS is going to do most of the sidewalks in front of hardware store, and possibly next to the other adjacent property to there. Carbone is doing their project from the, from the high school to the end of their property. The missing piece is a little house that's between Carbone and this piece of property. The DOT is, is believed there's not enough right-of-way to put a sidewalk in that property, but they don't want the developer to put it. That's the lead agency, the DOT wants the village to be the lead agency. So they need to find out from the village if that's the road you want to take, so they can continue the process. So that's what we are, to continue that sidewalk on that piece of property.
So it's really the side, area from where Dunkin' Donuts is, for lack of better. And in front of Day Rose, but not in front of Day Rose, across the street from Day Rose, so, you know.
There's a stone wall there now.
Correct, and that, that's, that's on the DOT right-of-way.
What do they propose to do with that?
No, the idea would be if, there would be what to rebuild the wall off the right-of-way to allow for the sidewalk in. The sidewalk can, it was a four-foot, depending on how much the right-of-way is, it could be a four-foot sidewalk, and the wall could be rebuilt on the right-of-way as long as the sidewalk gets put in place. A survey will have to be done first.
So who would rebuild the, the wall? The, the property owner would be responsible?
The idea would be that the, the developer would, would pay for the cost, but the village would be the lead agency with the DOT.
Well, that's a drop in elevation. You'd have to put a retaining wall up anyway to hold the backside of the sidewalk. Isn't it dropped over there?
I don't believe so.
To the right of the property, you're right. Not with the houses, but to the right of that, there isn't.
There's a drop off, yeah.
So that would be a contracted thing to talk about.
Talk about, yeah. So the idea of the village board is interested in doing that, the DOT needs to know that we can continue the process.
Continue that, working with that, yeah.
I, I think it's imperative. You can't just end the sidewalk, you know, at the end of the Carbone project, and then continue it again at Dunkin' Donuts. It's imperative that you have to continue, you know, that the sidewalk continues in front of there. So I, I would have no problem with the, the board taking the lead agent.
Maybe, maybe while they're, they're looking at that aspect too, they can look at the sightline coming out of Dunkin', because it's bad. There was just another accident there yesterday.
Well, that, that, that needs to be redone with the crosswalk as well.
So.
But if we put the sidewalk running perpendicular that way, we will alleviate that.
Right, exactly.
Hopefully, that's what happens.
We're going to hire somebody. Yeah.
And that, that'll be safer too, because you have a lot of these kids that are coming out of the high school there to go to Dunkin' Donuts, the pizza place, or whatever. You know, at least, you know, then there's a sidewalk. Hopefully, they'll figure out where the crosswalk is going to go, and hopefully, they use that so it'll be safer for everyone. Because it, I, I've seen it like at lunchtime.
It's insane.
Yeah, it's like, there's so many kids that come there, and it's like, they're walking on the side of the road, and it's like, oh my God. So, all right, good. Thank you, Marcus.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Cindy, can I go on to the next? Thank you. Okay, Steve, you are next, please report.
Cindy doesn't have anything else? All right, for the Village of Buchanan Police, in the month of November, there was a total of a hundred and ninety-two calls and forty-six moving summons of those calls. There was two arrests made, one disorderly conduct, there were forty-four property checks, and twelve medical aided calls. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Highway report.
I'm not ready.
You want me to?
No, I'm good, I'm good. Oh, highway report, here we go. Eighty-seven tons of garbage was picked up in the month of December. Is that, that's right? Yeah. Twelve tons of bulk and dumpsters. The leaf vac picked up eight hundred and nineteen yards of leaves, finally.
And it's still out there.
Finally got out there, thanks to a, a speedy repair on our leaf vac. If you haven't noticed, the electronic speed signs have been moved from street to street. Our highway department does do that. They helped our police department out with that. The leaf vac here again went out daily, and except when it was broken down, but they did do a good job in picking up where they left off. They did a speedy cleanup. They had a lot of time spending, spent a lot of time decorating the circle. If you noticed, they decorated the tree, they hung garland and reeds on the, on the light poles, did a beautiful job there, along with the, our, our committee. A lot of vehicle maintenance repairs, and, oh, I want to touch on this here. We have pictures here, but I don't think anybody else sees these pictures.
Unless, I don't know if they can get closer.
Those you guys.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so, we just had, they, they decorated in front of the memorials by the pavilion. They put these metal silhouettes up that are, are beautiful, and if you have a chance to see them, they're there now. Our highway guys did that. So, you know, they're busy, that's all.
Yes, they are.
If I may, just to add one more thing for the DPW you guys don't know yet, they're actually rehabbing the interior of the DPW area too, when they have the summer camp program and the nurses station. So they're actually replacing the pa, with panels, she rock new lighting, and they do that in-house during the winter. So that way, when we got our summer camp opens up next year, they'll, also they'll be working in the bathrooms as well to try to beautify everything for the, for the new summer camp.
Those are good winter projects.
Yeah, so they're doing that now.
Maybe when they're done there, maybe we could look into getting this paneling out of here.
Let's do it, let's do it.
I'm trying to remember what was behind here. Oh my God, it's the old plaster.
Is there anything behind this? Is there anything behind this?
Yeah, it's the old plaster, yeah, it's. That's what's holding the building up, come on now. All right, wastewater plant treated is, treated wastewater, ten million gallons, sludge removal, a hundred and four thousand gallons. There were six lab reports for the West, Westchester County Department of Health and the DEC. Everything is looking good over there. The inspection from, performed by the Department of Health, no violations, and. Okay, while performing the inspection of the wastewater treatment plant, the engineer who was newly assigned stated he had reviewed our history and past reports, and was very pleased to see the progress control and overall operation of the plant has approved from past history. So, they're doing a great job over there, so, thank you very much. And, Building Department.
Building Department. Peter's always a busy guy. You hear all night, all times of day and night, aren't you?
Twenty-four hours a day.
Yeah, almost.
Almost.
He issued ten building permits this month, or last month, excuse me, I'm looking at November, right, so November. He issued twelve certificates of occupancy. He's also continuing some fire inspections and accessory apartment inspections. And, to date, he had no illegal apartments that have been reported, right?
It's a good month.
Okay, it's a good month. So, you know, he's always busy out there, so, very informative and helpful with everything we need. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Bob, thanks, Peter. Buchanan Engine.
Okay, so, for the month of November, they had zero structure fires, ten EMS assists, one automatic alarm, four mutual aid given, and more, zero mutual aid received, and they had one moving veh, motor vehicle accident, for a total of sixteen alarms. Also, just to make note that they are in need of volunteers. There's benefits to being a volunteer fireman in the way of tax incentives and a rewards program, sort of like a pension. So anybody interested, reach out to the chief. The chief's phone number is nine one four, seven three seven, zero three three four. And we just like to thank for, thank them for all their hard work and dedication. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Dan, and Dan's announcements have, I think, helped with new volunteers. They've gotten quite a few new volunteers recently, so that's good to hear, yeah. Prosecutor's report, we have not got one. Attorney's report, Stephanie, what do you have for us?
We don't have anything much, other than keep an eye on the planning board, because we've got three more applications coming in. So, people are busy, and, and that's good, because some of them are going to be interesting. And, I don't think I have anything else.
Okay.
No, thanks though.
Thank you. Administrator's report.
Just, just to go back to Stephanie, your planning board's been busy, just to make you really aware, the Carbone project has been approved by the planning board, site plan. So the next step, talked to him today, he's getting engineering plans, detailed plans, and building plans to get ready, by the architect to get ready to the building department, hopefully that will be working on. He's also working on a commercial site to get a commercial use on the corner property, he's working on that as well. But he's waiting for the DOT to approve the drive drill, if the DOT approves the drive drill, he says, he said he has the end use to move forward with that one. Also, I want you to know, the, the old gas station on next to White Street, thirty-one seventy-six, came, what's it, Rolindo's property, that has a top over it. They came to the planning board during the discussion, they realized they needed a variance, so they will be coming to next, to next zoning board meeting for, to discuss the variance. I'll let Peter explain what that is, just so that the public know in case they're interested to come to the meeting if they have any questions. So I'll let Peter explain what the variance is.
Yes, in the C one zone, the, the pre-existing non-conforming building is three point nine feet on the White Street side. We deemed all of any posts to be a front yard. It's a corner lot, goals to the more technically front, but the side is a five fifteen combination. It can't be less than five foot twenty is the minimum, so if you have five, you have to have at least fifteen on the other side, which they have done, much more than that. But you can't be less, you can't be four or three. So they have three point nine feet now, and we need to get to the five. So they're going for variance for one point one feet, because they put an addition on the back, they're extending the building for the secondary floor parking, and the parking's gonna be underneath, so that was uh some, sort of not picked up on.
They're gonna have parking there underneath?
Well, they're
They're gonna build a structure.
It's a second floor level that's going back.
Oh.
And they'll be parked three cars under that. Um, didn't pick up on the fact that the building was being altered directly up, uh, then saw that and realized the variance was needed. Um, it got brought up at the meeting, because the other zones pretty much dictate a ten-foot side setback, but this is the C, the C one is a five fifteen. Twenty, twenty is a minimum, but you could be, you know, twelve and eight, you know, seven and thirteen, but you can't be less than five. And you have to have at least a twenty as a combination, so they have more than the fifteen on the opposite side. And uh, also the other thing that got brought up about them is a screening is going to be required on the left side of the property where the house is to the left of it, not the White Street side, because it upsets, it is commercial, but it upsets a residential home. So they're, they have to, also screening has to be put up, and they need uh approval for that too. So those are the two things that got brought up. So we're trying to get that resolved so that we could keep moving forward to get the building worked on and get those tarps off.
So they'll be coming to the planning board meeting as well to continue the discussion with the planning board, as well as also the zoning board, and then they gotta call two public hearings, one for the zoning, one is for the planning. But which one is gonna do it?
They're gonna do it in conjunction.
In conjunction, yes, at the same time. So working together to move that project along, to get that top off that building and get it, and get it fixed up. So it'll be a nice improvement to that area.
Absolutely.
So they're looking to put, last meeting we said a liquor store there? They're still looking at that?
They changed, they, they, no, they put that on, they put that as a hold.
Just as a hold.
Yes, a hold. They don't know what it's gonna be yet.
It was a deli in the first submission, and it was just something they put on. They don't know what it's gonna be as of yet.
Okay, all right. Just a commercial space downstairs and residential upstairs.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Two apartments.
Yes.
Okay.
That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, um, Marcus, I wanted a, an update on the cell phone.
Yes.
We've been working on getting the cell phone service better here in the village. We had some issues, and Marcus has been trying to get some information.
The gentleman we met where for the tower said he was gonna give me some contact information. Um, I've emailed him, he said he's still working on it, um, which he told me he had, and I haven't received anything as of this point. So I emailed him again today. Um, he has not responded. So I'll keep on trying to call Verizon, AT&T myself to get a government affairs person, but it's been almost impossible to get somebody for the cell phone coverage, but I'll keep trying.
Yeah, I don't know whether the municipality deals with them, because what we're trying to do before we go the cell tower route, we're trying to find out from the providers if they will do something on top of one of the buildings and to help us out that way, but. So that's still in process. We're still, we're still gonna move forward with that. Um, and update on entrance signs. Do we have any?
Yes, the entrance signs, they, uh, I placed an order for the three signs.
Okay.
So I told him to hold on to them through the springtime, so he'll hold, he'll hold them with no fee. Um, so they've been placed, and that's ready to go. On the electric signs, the digital signs, I got the price for it. The problem is, I've contacted five or six electricians. Uh, only got one that responded, and he went, he went like four, four, like forty-one hundred dollars to run the trench with the electrical back. So I'm waiting for other proposals, and it's, I I can't believe, six electricians, only one got back to me, and I've been working on it for two months. And so I'm still waiting to get another proposal, or at least, at least you can do a comparison with another price.
So they just have to dig a trench from, the trench from the the building to hook up the electric, the power supply.
Yeah, they gotta run the trench from the building out to where you want with the sign, I told him next to the sidewalk.
That's it, yeah. Conduit.
So if we had a backhoe, our BPW guys could do it ourselves.
Or, uh, what do they call those things? Bobcat?
Yeah, it shouldn't need that much.
No, I don't even, I wouldn't even put that out to bid. I would let our guys do it themselves. I don't understand why.
How deep does it have to be?
Their question, their question, how they're gonna run the electricity back into the building. They don't wanna drill into the, to the building.
You have to core drill it.
I, that, right.
It's a twenty amp circuit, that's one.
They say it's gonna be even more expensive if they did that.
To core drill into the building?
Yep.
Can they?
They, they're forty-one hundred dollars.
If our guys do it?
Oh, no, no.
Oh, no, no.
Forty-one hundred dollars, their, their biggest price is cost is to, is to run the electric, the electric wire back into the building, and that's snaking through the, you know, how you have the floodlights out there, and when the trees, there's, you talk about, go ahead, go ahead.
Sorry, the, the tree lights are actually on a timer system, so we need the sign to be electrified twenty-four hours a day. So timer's off, there's no power, so there's no power there, that's full time at the moment. It's only, it's dedicated. It's not a three circuit, it's a, it's a single circuit, so if it was two.
Not even where the generator is? There's no power?
That's pretty much way over that side.
On the other side.
Yeah, that's the other side of the building.
Couldn't you cut in before the timer though? You can slice in before the timer?
The timer's downstairs in the mechanical room, in this room.
Oh, it's not outside?
No, it's inside.
Oh, it's inside.
That's what I'm saying, it has to come from in.
So you still have to core drill anyway?
They still gotta get into the building, yeah.
So if anybody knew the electrician? Please, six of them, I can't.
I know.
That's uh.
Did you call the guy over from Blake's Avenue?
I did. He has not resp- I met with him. Dan, the day he's called, he's, you gave me his suggestion, I called him, he was here two days later, I'm still waiting for a proposal.
All the vendors we usually use haven't responded?
No one.
Except for one?
Except for one.
To do, to run twenty amp dedicated line, nobody wants to do that?
Yeah.
I'll get back to you. I, I, you'll have it next week.
The problem.
It was a holiday.
I'll explain, explain the quick problem is, a single electrician that has no employees, as you know, he could just work and charge whatever rate hourly that he chooses. If you have an employee or a helper, he's doing, his prevailing wage, and that pushes it, that double and trip, two and a half, you know Anthony, you know prevailing wage. So that's why a lot of them are like, I have a helper.
They have to make it worth their work.
They have to make it worth it, because they have no choice.
Yeah, it's a, a lot of no.
Has to be.
But I'll get back to you.
Yeah, it's not over yet. It's not over yet.
Well, Dennis would have to hire somebody as well to to cover the cost, which would be a prevailing wage job, but if he did it in one day, he'd make money.
Right. Like I said, there's money in everything, you know, Anthony, they just gotta want it.
So, I just, don't remember, where, where did we decide the sign was gonna go up at the corner, uh, as we're coming in on the driveway there?
Well, you got the, you got the sidewalk, uh, you got the big green box, so I was thinking to the left of the side, so that way you can see it both directions.
But that's on the other side of the build, that's, that's on the generator side of the building.
You're, you're on that side of the walkway, weren't you?
Yeah, it's to the
Is the walkway, if you're facing, where the generator is?
Where it's more open, the property's more open, the gazebo in that area.
So you want it all the way to the right-hand side where the gazebo is. I was going on the other side of the, uh, where the, where the big green, where they're
You were going between electric box and the sidewalk.
What's, what's out there, right, the, yeah, the electric box.
By the driveway entrance.
Are there any light poles out there?
Yes.
Trying to think.
Have to go look, have to go look. Right, there's one at the corner of the parking lot, you know, where they park there.
You could tap in there.
Again, but if it's all, those are automatic, or are they on timers?
You still gotta have a lot, hot, a hot feed all the time.
It's a possibility, depending on how it's tied, if it's tied into the timer or not.
Yeah, we're trying to see what the closest light might be.
The light poles are on, uh, photocells.
Yeah, photocell, yeah.
So you go before the photocell.
Before the photocell.
So they're full time, maybe we could tie into that?
We look at the lights.
I think it depends where you wanna place it, what you're looking at. And if you're gonna put it by the driveway, then you're gonna have to take all those shrubs down in the front.
No, I was gonna go, I was gonna go, almost, I, I coming out the front door.
Because you wanna have a sight distance.
Yeah, I was gonna go out the front door of the building, as you go down to the, to the sidewalk, on the left-hand side of this little sidewalk that we have out there. So that way, if you're passing the big green box, you'll see it.
Take a look.
If there's another location that you guys like, let me know.
I recommended the light pole.
I'm seeing how far the light poles, so it's a good idea.
And the tree has, has electrical coming into that area too, but that's the timer?
From the backside, but it's, it's on timer.
Okay, all right.
It's on the mechanical timer.
I'm just trying to visualize.
I think Peter's absolutely right, that when he got into prevailing wage, a lot of guys.
Yeah, of course.
They just say, you know, I don't know why.
Okay, all right.
Sixty-seven dollars an hour.
That's on the lighter, you're talking one forty. That's the, that's the kind of numbers that were giving me.
But remember, Marcus, there's no work out there. I hear that constantly. I, I, I don't know. That's all I'm gonna say. Anyhow, so, um, let's see, um, the board received, I just want everyone to know, they received a complaint about the parking area out at the post office. Um, today, our highway foreman sent uh, people out, and that was cleaned up. And um, there has been some issues with fifteen-minute parking, um, but that will be addressed. Um, what's, what's seems to be happening, people are staying there longer than the fifteen minutes, so. And when people wanna use the post office or anything else, it's, it's all tied up. Um, I'm waiting, um, Holtech was on vacation last week. They closed the company down the week between Christmas and New Year's, which I think is a beautiful thing. Um, so I'm just waiting, um, for some dates, just, you know, for some dates from Holtech to set up, start up the negotiations. I'll let the board know when I hear from them. And I'm working on a few other things, but I'm not, just not ready to discuss that yet. To be continued. Um, Steve, what do you have for us? We'll start the opposite way today.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Marcus, do we have any update on the, the fire truck?
The fire truck has been ordered.
Okay.
Confirmed. They say delivery date late, late August, early September.
Okay, and then the, the bond resolution already went through?
Yeah, bond resolution's been done, so we'll take the bond out maybe in June or July, and then money will have, be available for the truck delivery.
Okay.
So the fund balance policy is a perfect timing to get everything set up, yes.
Great. And then we're gonna start the, our, you know, budget, um, that'll start when, February?
Probably in middle part of February, end of February, yes.
Okay, great. I don't really have much more, I just wish everybody a happy and healthy New Year. I do encourage the residents to, to please come out, uh, get involved. There are a lot of changes, as you could see. We discussed the development today, planning board has a lot on their plate. And uh, you know, we also made a change, you know, today with the, the law with the snow parking, so just to have more residents come out. It, you know, email us, call us, do whatever it is, uh, you know, uh, to get in touch, because we'd like to hear from you, like to hear your ideas. I do, um, wanna thank the planning board. I know our chairman's here in the audience, and thank you for your, your efforts with the AMS project as well as the Carbone project, and Eileen as well, who's, who's also here from the planning board, so thank you both. So, that's all I have.
Dan, what do you have for us?
Uh, just a couple of things. Uh, I know we spoke about a letter going up to Governor Hochul in regards to uh, possibility of extending the cessation fund. I just wanna put that on the agenda for the workshop, if that's possible. Um, and then, uh, volunteers for the Saint, Saint Patrick's Day Parade Committee, we're in need of volunteers. Anybody that wants to get involved with, uh, helping us, um, continue this tradition would be great. Um, also, any kind of nominees for a grand marshal and aide, uh, you can go right out on the website, it's out there. Um, and then I just wanna say a happy and healthy New Year to everybody.
All right, thank you. Anthony, what do you have for us tonight?
I don't have much. Uh, just hope everyone had a great holiday. Um, uh, just to touch on with, with my trustee Laker and trustee Stewart said the pub, about the public hearings coming up with our development, which is very important and critical for our future. Uh, I'd like as many as our citizens to get involved as, as possible to these public hearings. If you wanna know what's going on, this is, this is where to find out. And these are very important. Uh, the planning board is, is knee-deep in a lot of stuff, and they've been doing a great job. Um, and, and they will continue, uh, on, down this path, hopefully with development in this area. Uh, it's critical, like I said, to our survival, that we, that we try and, and, and do smart development and, and stuff that works better for us in the, uh, in the long run. Um, as far as, uh, the other stuff, the AMS development, I, I think it looks great, I do. I think it's gonna be wonderful. I, I, I like the presentation they gave us tonight. Um, it touched on a lot of the, uh, components that they're gonna use as far as construction and layout, which is, is, I liked it. I like the design. I also like the fact that they offered the ability to add the commercial component in the front, which was a, uh, something that we, we stressed to them numerous times, because it, it does fit inside of our overlay. And it, it, it just takes away from that big parking lot in the front that everybody sees. Uh, I, I think it would be nice and, and something good for our village. Um, I'm excited about the Carbone development. I think that's a, uh, exciting path we're headed down to. Um, I'm glad everything went, got approved with the site plan approval on that. Um, and I'm waiting to hear back, uh, on our negotiations from Holtech. I think this is where, you know, this is another major thing that needs to be taken care of as soon as possible with this village. Uh, it's, it's gone on for a long time, it needs to be done. And um, just wish everybody a happy New Year, and, uh, two thousand twenty-four is gonna be great for the Village of Buchanan.
Bob, what do you have for us?
I don't really have too much. You guys covered most of it, but I would like to follow up a little bit on Anthony's about the AMS project. I mean, that, that was a good visualization for me, to really see what that place can look like. It really looks pretty spectacular to me. I think it's a great thing for the community, and other than that, alls I can say is happy New Year to everybody.
Any comments from the floor?
Step aside for me.
Me, she comes.
Oh, okay. I had seen some, yeah, okay, good.
Uh, ladies, you'd be sitting in the front.
He's local.
Now, this way you can observe more. Otherwise, you can't see him back, and I'm not OCD yet. Um, what is the board's, um, thoughts on sidewalks on Albany Post Road from that AMS project? Just out of curiosity.
Going north or south?
South. No, going north.
Going north. Yeah, there, there's, I, I think it's a good thing. We were fortunate a couple of years ago to have the other side of the road in front of the church, and we had gotten some grant money. So on the opposite side, there is some, some sidewalk areas, which, you know, of course, it's safe.
What I'm looking for is, I'm looking for your direction on what side of this road, Albany Post Road, right, north, uh, right or left?
I think it would have
Do you want a continued sidewalk?
I think you'd have to have it in front of the, the firehouse. I, I thought of it as well. I, I think it should extend all the way to White Street, but I, I don't see how you do it on the other side because of the houses that are there and, and the parking.
Well, I also believe that the drainage on the other side is an issue. You have a tremendous amount of
Okay, well, you know, that's why I'm asking, you know, I just wanna know what your thoughts were for sidewalks, because would you have a crosswalk then on White?
White Street, yeah.
To cross over, and then you'd have to continue the sidewalk to meet up with the, the Shell Station.
I mean, the ultimate is to have on both sides sidewalks, but there are areas that's, it's gonna be an issue, because you know, when you get to White Street going north there, what are you gonna do, take down that rock?
Yeah, no, I know, that's what I'm saying.
So there's certain areas, maybe in front of the businesses, um, one of the businesses there, that might be an issue by the firehouse. I don't know how that would affect the firehouse and them getting the trucks out of there, so it's something that really needs to be looked at. Um, the i- the ideal goal is to have both sides, but if not, then you need a crosswalk where it's safe. You know, there's sight distance for people to be able to switch the side of the road if they can't continue.
If I may, if I may, a discussion?
No, no, you hit on it, actually. It's
We're think, great minds think alike, see that?
You did, you said it.
So the plan right now, until we can do something more on Route nine A, that's why you saw the crosswalk from the AMS project going out to Lindsay? Or they got a sidewalk on Lindsay that takes you down to, to downtown the village, per se? So the plan is, for now, if people wanna get to the downtown, they'll, they'll go across Route nine in that one section, and then go on Lindsay down to the downtown, for now.
Right, well, I was looking at, as either properties become available, who decides to build, who decides what they wanna build, if there's any changes?
Perfect example, the, uh, Rolindo property, we're talking about putting side, that, every time somebody wants to come into a new development, the idea is to put sidewalks in, in front of that development as well, and continue that as we continue on.
Well, we made them, we suggested continuing, uh, from where it ends on White Street to come all the way down to Albany Post Road. That's why I'm asking, what are you guys looking for in regards to what you envision?
Just to give you an idea, the sidewalk that we put on Route nine A, next, next to the gas station?
Yes.
That cost four hundred thousand dollars.
I know.
Just to give you an idea, so
No, I know.
Unless there's grants available, that's a, it's a uphill struggle to put sidewalks in, unless people are developing, and then we haven't put sidewalks in.
And that's what it's gonna be based on. I believe it's based on the development.
Yep.
And whenever we get new development, we, we, we ensure that they put sidewalks in, because I think
Right, no, I know that. I, I've got that, but I'm looking at, you know, the potential of, the potential on the AMS side going down, except for the firehouse, you've got some commercial properties, so that's where, you know, um, and one of them may become available at some point in time. Uh, you know, so I just wanted to know what your vision was on which side of the Albany Post Road.
I would, I'd like to maintain that sidewalk that AMS is putting in, all the way to White Street.
Yeah, well, I would too, but
Because you're gonna have to maintain the drainage on one or the other side.
Right, well, you want the most advantageous side to, to work, you know, and if that's the right side going north. Right, well, you want the most advantageous side to, to work. You know, and if that's the right side going north, um, then that's the one you want. Okay, thank you.
Alright, thanks, Emily. No other comments from the floor? I don't think we have any executive session items this evening? Okay, alright. So I'd like to make a motion to close the meeting. Can I have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
And thank you, everyone. Have a great Buchanan day and a happy and healthy New Year.
Cindy.
Recording stopped. I know, Cindy's like.